Would the David have a sewer thing?
Oh.
Yes.
No.
I've been here all day. That's okay.
What is this done?
In the middle.
Everybody's phone turned off?
I wanted to call.
I just turned mine off when it rang while I got off control.
Bring it, everybody's out of the year, so I'm waiting a little.
Find me for today.
You ready?
You know what I know about it.
Okay.
Call up Davidson County. Morning Commissioners Meeting, 30th May 4th, want to welcome each one of you here and all the folks that are on the remote. We welcome y'all as well. Appreciate you being here. We're gonna have the invocation and pledge of allegiance and I believe it's your turn, Mr. Shaw.
Those who like to join me, I'm as gracious as heavenly Father. Father, we thank you for this beautiful morning that you blessed us with. We thank you, Father, for your wisdom, your strength and your guidance. And we pray that you will continue to bless us with those qualities so that we can make decisions that benefit our citizens. And, and Father, help us to see the positives that you put before us and focus less on the negatives. Thank you, Father, for this day, for it is in his precious name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess we're gonna have to move that flag.
I apologize, we just don't like turning our back to you, so we got a flag there that would...
We just do that to confuse everyone. See how many people turn.
Maybe we need to move it to right here.
All right, we need a motion to excuse Commissioner Mizell and Commissioner Elliott. They have a motion. Don't we want to excuse them? They have a motion to excuse them.
I make the motion to excuse him, Mr. Chairman.
Second. I second. You want a verbal?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, likewise. Recognition, we're gonna have the veterans' recognition. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've started a, actually the chairman started it, and we have took off with it and I appreciate it. But we like to honor our veterans, so if we have any veterans in the audience, would you please stand and be recognized? No veterans today? All right, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. If you wish to speak at public address, there's a registration up here, you need to sign in if you want to speak. We have the agenda. Our manager has asked that discussion on possible moratorium for the waiver of certain items at the landfill be added to the agenda this morning. Are there any other changes in the agenda?
Here none, I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Motion made and second. Cast your vote.
I'll let Karen have that.
Do we have anyone signed up for public address?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Good. Items for deliberation update on the county spay and neuter program, and our manager will lead that off.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tim, come on up and help me with this. Several of you have talked to me for quite some time now about our spay and neuter program that we've had on, I'm not even gonna guess how many years now we've been doing this. You guys know the program started real simple where you have a group that was wanting to do the procedures and have worked out arrangements with doctors. They have, the citizen comes in, pays essentially a co-pay, and then the difference is split between the agency and the county, fifty-fifty, that's how it all started. Over time, and Tim's gonna walk you through these papers you got in front of you here, I know it's a lot, but he can kind of boil it down pretty quick. We've had other groups jump in, Animal Care, of course DC Animal Alliance, which is the SNIP program you probably well aware of, Loving Pets Inn, and then Humane Society. All of them have different arrangements with different doctors, and the goal is to keep the fees kind of at fifty-fifty. I'll elaborate on that a little bit later, but Tim can help you with kind of what you got before you here.
Okay, lots of handouts, I apologize, but this is, I'm gonna reference this one first. Just, it kind of paints the picture, gives you a little quick overview of the program. As the county manager said, this program was adopted in 2018 with the concept being you take the spay or neuter cost minus the co-pay, and the county and the organization will split that cost. Of course, since 2018, lots have changed, prices have changed. A lot of veterinarian offices have gone from privately owned to being corporately held, and that's changed pricing and some cooperation. So, we basically, a couple of the organizations have reached out to us, and you've probably heard from them too, and discussed these fees. The two big players in the county are SNIP and Animal Care Foundation. And those are the two primarily that will be looking to change their agreements just to really realign with reality of what the cost is. You can see on this sheet, these are the reimbursement rates, present day. So, the concept would be, you know, you, so one of the cheapest procedures would be a cat spay. It used to be forty-five dollars. Citizen would pay twenty, the county and the organization would split the difference, twelve fifty apiece, and that's changed. This bigger sheet here, I just put this together and cleaned it up, that shows three different clinics and what they charge for procedures. That forty-five dollar cat neuter has gone, has increased to fifty-nine dollars, seventy-five dollars, and ninety-five dollars respectively for three different clinics. That's just the nature of business. So, what you'll ultimately end up seeing is on Monday, we're gonna have some revised, this Form A, B, and C, this is the agreements, that will be revised to reflect those reimbursement rates. The concept's gonna be the same, co-pay, you know, you got the cost, subtract off the co-pay, and the county will split with some caps.
Tim, the reason, real quick, the reason why you got this before you is Animal Care approached us with new rates, and so we have aligned them back to fifty-fifty, but SNIP got off track for a little while and got a little ahead of fifty-fifty. This will put it back to fifty-fifty. The second page there, if you're ever curious, it's actually summed this whole thing up. You can see what we spent on this program for five years, eighty thousand dollars, and you see how many animals we've done, twenty-five hundred, that's a lot. Almost, when we started this thing, we had many conversations in this room about we'd never get a cat done, it would never happen. Fifty-two percent cats, so probably one of the best programs we ever started around here, as far as I'm concerned, with animals. But to keep it going and back up this a little bit more, I know there's been some kind of, on the streets scuttlebutt, you know, there've been some problems with getting people doing spay and neuters, obviously around in the county. There's a big group out of Greensboro that fell off the cliff after COVID because they had doctor issues. As you know, finding veterinarians is tough. I think they've got new management and got that squared up now, so as I understand it, the slots available to get procedures done is picking back up. That bleeds over into a second kind of conversation. Monday night, you're gonna get the proposed budget from me, and inside that budget, remember last year we had a pass-through money from Senator Jarvis to send to some outside agencies. We call it prescribed, in other words, it came to us, we handed to the agencies. Tim keeps track of that, of the agencies, so they've all got agreements as to what they'll be doing with the funds, et cetera. We've got another round of that this year, bigger dollar amount. Last year, last time it was five hundred thousand, now it's a million and a half. Pass-through, again, no cost to the county. There's agencies listed on there, and two of them are animal-type agencies. In conversations with Senator Jarvis, it doesn't matter to him if we allocate these things by the agencies, that will be up to us, we can move it around. My point in saying that is, there is some conversation going on in the background, local folks, doctors saying that, look, we would, if you can get us a building, we'll look at running the facility. And that, you know, as far as my time dealing with animals here, that's what I've always heard, is could we ever get a place here in the county? So we don't have to drive to Greensboro, we don't have to drive to, you know, Mecklenburg County or where we gotta go.
Facility meaning low-cost spay.
Right, low-cost spay and neuter. Because, I mean, the doctors are not, and we polled them all, and Commissioner Shale and Vice Chairman Yates spent about two o'clock in the morning with me one night down there with a handful of doctors in the room, and it was clear to me from that conversation, they didn't want to necessarily get involved in low-cost spay and neuter full-time, because I think there's just not a profit there for them, big enough to get involved, and it's a lot of work. So if a group could run it, that would be an interesting proposition. So there could be some seed money there through Jarvis's pass-through to take a look at that. I'm not saying we gotta look at it today, I'm just letting you know, that's something could be on the horizon. That relates to this issue, but today, what Tim's got for you is a realignment of the rates. Animal Care's wanting new rates that still matches the fifty-fifty percent, and we're realigning SNIP back to the fifty percent. SNIP approached us weeks ago wanting us to subsidize more percentage at a higher rate, instead of fifty-fifty, go to something else, I don't know what it'd end up being, eighty-twenty or something like that. And again, before Greensboro got back involved, maybe that was something we could consider talking about, but now that they're back up and running, and if we want to get involved in a building, I'm comfortable putting it back to the fifty-fifty today. So that's really what Tim's here to do, is give you an update on that. It's about time, after five years, to how many animals we've done and the costs and all that stuff. So he didn't mean to package so much information, but he wanted you to be aware of everything that's going on with this program, and again, stuff that could be coming down the line.
Why do you feel like it's been, the amount has decreased almost?
It has, and I got proof, because when I started with the animal shelter six years ago, we had about eight thousand plus animals coming through a year. We are down now to three, or twenty-five hundred to three. There's no doubt in my mind that all them animals just didn't disappear and stop coming. No doubt in my mind, this spay and neuter program has stopped the intake of animals into the shelter. And which is, because you think about it, if you spay one, or neuter one cat, cats can have litters of babies multiple times a year. So one cat can stop, you know, several kittens from being born, which stops them ultimately in the shelter, especially if they're out here on the street. So if you ride around the sea, you don't see animals roaming around as much as you may be used to, stray dogs, stray cats, et cetera. So there's no doubt in my mind, that was the best money ever spent as far as the commissioners are concerned, and one of the best ideas we ever had in terms of, remember, we didn't want to get involved in trying to manage the doctors and the staff and the whole, we put that back on the agency. We were a supplier of the fifty percent. And it's worked like a charm. It's just got a little off because, again, we lost some doctors and some, the COVID kind of threw that thing out of whack. But this low-cost spay and neuter building is an interesting proposition.
Casey, I may have missed something, but our part of this, just the county's paying it, or we paying it with some of this pass-through money?
No, we have a piece, and Jarvis has now introduced a second option.
So we've been paying it?
This eighty grand here is your, is county money.
But now the state has come in and gonna give us...
You remember last year Jarvis had a list of agencies, and they were mostly public safety agencies and some human services. This year, it's a little different mix. It's got some, still got some public safety folks, it's not going to rescue squads, because he did that last round, but there's two animal organizations in this. He's already kind of give us the list, and that's fine, but he's already indicated to me that he's comfortable with you all moving those funds around. Maybe not for, we wouldn't probably do it for the human service agencies, because it's so locked into a unique program. But I know the animal folks in this community, I'm telling you, I mean, I'd be shocked if they, if we come up with an option to get them a low-cost spay and neuter building, I don't know why anybody would not want that, because that's all I've heard for eight years, is we need an option here.
The, when I worked with these folks, and I worked with you back in 2018 to get this thing kicked off. But the problem that we had was the animosity between all of the different groups. And if we have one group managing this facility, are the other ones who don't like that group, are they gonna utilize that or not?
I don't know that it'll be necessarily a group. We've got individual veterinarians that are stepping up to the plate saying, and I don't know how they would pull their staff in or where they would get the staffing from, so I don't know that it's an organized group just yet.
I thought you said in your presentation that we get a group to run it.
When I say a group, I mean spearheaded by one or two doctors that are gonna pull maybe volunteers, I'm not sure how they're gonna do that, there's a lot of details to work out. So I don't know that it would be a SNIP thing, you know, or an Animal Care thing or anything like that, because they don't have doctors. They're going to the doctors to get service.
Would this be something, that new place, that where we just rezoned it? That young man that come the other day, would this be something that, like, his facility would be able to help with?
I think he's one of the doctors that's willing to help do the spay and neuter, but not his, I mean, he's got a veterinarian clinic, but I think he's willing to donate some of his time to work at the spay and neuter, low-cost spay and neuter clinic, you know?
Okay, all right.
He's been one of the ones that's really been helping a lot in the past, from what I understand.
Kendrick was doing a lot.
I know the feral cats has Hewland.
Hewland, Hewland out of Thomas.
Doctor Hewland.
I know the feral cats in the Thomas area, I know for a fact that that has drastically cut off. There used to be a couple of ladies, and shoot, they spent half the day going around the city feeding or picking up traps or so on and so forth, and I just don't see that anymore.
There is a young lady that runs through this program that does feral cats only, so she's one of the few that'll do it for the obvious reason, it's a tough, that's tough. But this thing got, it started with the SNIP group, again, 2018 before you got here, and it just morphed out into people who have specialties, like her. She's a feral cat-only person, that's all she does. And so the concept, the idea of the program worked like a charm. That, again, we weren't gonna get involved in trying to run it, but we'll help do the fifty percent and just keep going with it. And so, but this other thing, I'll call it this other thing, this building is a, it's probably where we always want, I remember in 2018, we were in this room at a work session one morning, we were talking about a mobile unit. Remember, we costed that out? We talked about a building, and we shied away from it because of trying to get involved and run it, and that's the trick. I would, I would want to flush out completely, if somebody's gonna run it, I need a commitment, because I don't want to see y'all get involved in trying to staff it and run it. Maybe a building is a different conversation.
Yeah, they just leased the building for a dollar a year or something.
Right, right, I just, it's one of them things we gotta work through, but I want you to be aware of it, that it's kind of brewing in the background. It's not today, it's probably not next week coming forward. This program Tim's got for you today is just leveling out the rates for these two organizations.
The thing about it is, you touched on it a while ago, is whenever you have one of these programs, and it's an effective program, the amount of animals that you see every year will decrease, because you're not gonna have them there. Well, if we put money in a building and it decreases to almost nothing, or have we used the money wisely?
That's, I mean, that's an interesting question that I can't really answer at this point, because there's still animals out there, and it is rather inconvenient to have to pack them up and take them all the way to Greensboro, or take them all the way to somewhere else locally. So I don't know that we'll ever get to the day, that's just in my, in the shelter, you know, in the county shelter, but those rescues, you remember, you saw some numbers yesterday, I sent them out. The adoptions are down, but the rescue percentages are up. So that tells me the rescues, and you know how the rescues work, I mean, they take a lot of that eight thousand animals, not all of them, obviously, and they hold them to get them places to go. Remember, that was another thing we did when we took back over the shelter. Mr. Shale, I'm gonna put this one with you, because you probably said this more than anybody in this room. We used the community to help us decentralize our animal shelters, that makes sense. Put the animals out into places that we knew we could adopt, and that's what they do, of course, they fill up. So I think there's still a, if you stopped that tomorrow, if the rescues didn't participate, a lot of those animals would come back to the shelter. So it was a twofold, you all doing this program, plus you got more community involvement with animals, let me just say it that way.
Well, and when you look at rescue, not the rescues, but the adoption rates, when you have a decrease in the intake, that limits the choices that are made out there. So of course you might have that, with success of lowering the intake into a shelter, your choices are reduced also, and so you may have a reduction in your adoption percentages.
Right, right, and it's...
So that shows that what we've been able to do thus far has worked.
Right, but our main goal was to stop having eight thousand animals in that building, because you remember back then, when we had that many, it was hard to keep that building disease-free, virus-free. It was almost impossible. Now, not a problem. As you see from the numbers yesterday, the animals that come in, that die in the kennels, or die on arrival, pretty much zero. That tells me the building's clean.
I appreciate both of you working on this, because, you know, I told you earlier that Matt and I met with a large group in one of the vets, and, you know, they're very, very serious about what they do, and they're really trying, so this, I think this'll make them very happy.
The problem is that the vets, they, they come and they go. Doctor Smunk up at North Davidson has been trying to retire for a year, and he can't find any vets to hire to do the work. And that's what I fear, is that we go out and spend all this money, and then at the initial part of it, the vets are okay, and then they slow... And then they slowly die out and they're not gonna, uh, do the, uh, spay and neuter anymore. And you've got this bill set now.
I, I, that's a legitimate concern. And that's what I'm saying, this ain't gonna solve today. Just put this in your mind and put it, pin it in the parking lot. Because we got choices. We could either go that route of a building, but I'm with you. We'd have to really sit down and iron out how that works. Or if, um, maybe we come back to this more subsidy conversation. Right now, again, SNIP today, what Tim's got before you, puts them back to the fifty percent rates. It was going back there naturally anyways, I understand it. But go back to that and we're, you know, we're not gonna try to go eighty percent in or whatever right now. Because we want to flush this other idea out. But I'm with you, Mr. Chairman, if it don't work, it just, it won't work, we spot a red flag, then we maybe have to go to a plan B. I don't know. But I like the idea because I know the community's been talking about this for the eight years I've been here.
Well, there's one positive thing, if it don't work, your building's still worth probably what you gave for it. So you're not out of a whole lot of money.
Right.
If you buy it at a decent price.
Yep. Right now, it's, they expensive, and in a few years, it may not be.
Maybe not, in minutes.
Boy, too.
Yeah, well, you got to take.
You're also given, uh, your participant in providing the tools necessary for our volunteer work to continue and to to grow and work. Because it's sort of hard to do something when you're beating your head against the wall and you have nowhere to go.
Right.
Do you happen to know how often we carry, uh, animals from our shelter to get fixed? Is it once a week?
I believe it is once a week.
I think it is, yeah.
Um, now Donna, she may be here in a few minutes, um, for a little piece for her, but it could have slacked down, it could have slacked down with the virus and stuff like that because they started slowing down. We can, Mr. Yates, we can send them once a week if that answers your question. We could supply slots.
Okay.
The, uh, Humane Society was looking for a building, didn't they, uh, get a building down?
They moved down here.
On Piedmont?
Right down here.
Here, I mean, there's a building right down here. We actually looked at it one time. Um, I don't know what road that is, a little side road off Business Eighty-Five. They're over there now. Um, it had a big kind of a warehouse area. It was like a distribution center. We took a look at it with, uh, if you, you probably don't remember, but we did, uh, with Danny Norman. And there was some challenges with the building.
With Arne's and Lolly Wally Doodle.
Yeah, Lolly Wally Doodle building, yeah. But there was some challenges foundation-wise with the building. We, we passed on it, they bought it shortly thereafter.
Well, now that they've got it, could we use that facility and let them run it?
I don't know. Um, I don't know what they're doing with that backend piece, um, because if you-
Well, they were hauling animals once a, once a week to, uh, I think Winston. But they had, when they had that open lot up there, they, people brought the animals in. They put them in the crates and took them over there to Winston.
Yeah.
I don't know whether they're still doing exactly the same, but if if we could set up in their shop and have the vets go in there and and do the spay and neuters, then that solves a couple of problems.
That's definitely a conversation we can have.
Just gotta look at the business.
You got it, right.
And see what's, uh, before we-
You need flat, I mean, floors that drain to the center because it's gonna get nasty. You know, you got, you housing the animals in there before you do the procedures and, um, you know-
That's gotta be approved.
Everything can, everything can happen, right.
And I understand the section that they're wanting to use for that, something has, I can't remember what it was. Casey, you might remember, it's come to light about that particular section of the building that could not be used without doing some drastic-
For Lolly Wally Doodle?
Yeah.
There was something that that, I can't remember exactly what it is, but I think you're right. And it kind of turned us off to wanting to buy the building. I remember that, there was some restriction there.
Lolly Wally did, did a lot of work in there. I don't know what what remains to be done. But, um, the Humane Society did not, uh, keep any animals. It was one day, you brought the animals, they put them in crates and they took them over there and picked them up and brought them back. There was no animal housing at all.
Right.
And it may be that they're not interested in leasing their building for a dollar a year.
I don't know what they're using it about for storage or whatever. I mean, it was a pretty good sized space, but they could be storing a lot of stuff in there, I don't know.
Because I'm sure at low-cost spay neuter, they'd want us to lease it to them for nothing. They're close to it.
They've got some kind of flea market kind of thing over there where they're selling things to use-
Make money.
Yeah, to supplement what they're doing.
Like a thrift store?
It is, yes, yes.
Yeah, they were doing that out of that lot when they pissed off and then.
Stay tuned for the building piece. But again, Monday night, you'll have a budget with those funds in there. Um, if y'all are okay with it, Tim can move this, I guess, to Monday night.
Loose in the top, if you all would give me a little guidance on, there's these extra fees and it's on this sheet for cats and dogs that either are pregnant or large dogs. There's additional fees. The way that's been handled in the past is, um, SNIP would, we would split some of the cost. We would pay an additional five dollars and they would chip in five dollars. You can see these fees are a little bit more than that. They add a little bit more to the cost. Um, I didn't know if you all wanted to maybe increase that to a flat fifteen or twenty or just you split it fifty fifty or or how to address that. So I can just make sure we're doing what our due diligence-
I'm good with fifty fifty.
Fifty fifty, I'm fine with that, yeah.
Here's the issue, what does most of these pets go to, you know? I mean, I see between the first and the last, it's almost double in cost.
Right.
And I can't control that.
From what, SNIP uses Humane Society of the Piedmont. Animal Care uses all three and anybody, you know, and others, who may, they have to get resourceful. Um, Sheets has been their go-to for a lot of the feral cats. And that fee there, just just to add this in for the feral and the Sheets clinic, I know that that includes rabies. Um, just so you know. So they've been kind of, theirs has been spread out. The last invoice I saw was was spread out. The prices weren't as high yet, though. I don't know that this has, maybe this is very recent and just hit the, you know, just hit recently. Um, but it's pretty spread out. But on the whole, SNIP is the the bulk of of the procedures and they use Humane Society. And they've used, uh, Southgate, which is where Doctor Hewland was was. And he he will be a good person to partner with in the future, too.
I think so, too.
Um.
Are you wanting to put this into budget or are you just wanting to, uh, to put it on a consent agenda for?
Monday night, yeah, he's gonna, every one of these folks have agreements with us, with these prices. So I think what Tim's after is the the ability to put this on Monday night to adjust animal care's fees based on this logic and put SNIP back to their fifty fifty logic.
Correct. And any of the others, they usually mirror SNIP's fee structure. So loving petting, adoptions, fee struc-, you know, up to fifty percent is what we've been reimbursing. Um, so I'll update those. The language will be very generic in general. We're gonna tweak some of that and remove some of the caveats here and there because certain programs have their own eligibility criteria. Our eligibility criteria is you live in the county and you need to get your pet spayed or neutered, um, pretty much.
I have a motion and second to put this on the consent agenda for Monday night.
Motion, Mr. Chairman?
A consensus, a consensus would be okay, Mr. Chair.
What?
A consensus would be okay.
You think it would?
Yes, sir.
I want to vote.
Okay.
All right. We already got a motion and a second. We waste both of them if we don't vote. Verbally, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is that all right?
That is fine, thank you.
It's a lot of work here, Tim, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim, we appreciate it.
In the meantime, let's look at some of these other options.
We are, we will.
Check with the people out there and see if they want to run it. That would be a, that would be a thing, yeah. You're still up, manager. EMS shift premium program update.
Uh, stack of papers here in front of you, and I hate to do it, but I just want you to have everything that we know related to this. Um, Out and Mark, I'll need y'all, let me-
Morning Commissioners.
If y'all will indulge me just for a minute and let me, let me walk you through the program, what we've done. You've seen some of this in March, but Tim updated for me. And then we got a couple of options here to talk through about this. Um, so we feel like we owed you a program, another program update. You'll take this big paper and just flip it over to the first page.
Oh, wow.
Yep, Tim's got you, it looks like a busy chart, but it's really simple in concept. Big one here. What, she, we're gonna recognize her in just a little while. We got a, um, issue we need to contend with with her on an agenda here, too.
Morning, Donna.
Um, you remember the idea behind this program? Basically, we've got shifts, when I say shifts, shifts out, you got two people on a truck. So there's two shifts. You get a shift out, two shifts out leads to a truck out. Truck starting to get out can lead to, or one person riding can be what we call a TNT, Treatment No Transport. I'm giving you all the variety of options that can occur any given day or night in the EMS system. Or you have nobody riding, you got a truck out, which for an outlying base means a base is out. You remember inside Thomasville and Lexington, in a perfect world, if this system was operating at an optimal level, we'd have staff at every outlying base, Tyro, Arcadia, Midway, Southmont, Denton, Walburg. And inside the two cities, you'd have two trucks. And then even in more perfect world, you'd have the QRVs supplying, uh, what, north and south?
That's correct. We also run a, um, a third truck in Lexington during the day.
During the day, right.
We have those staff.
So since this has kind of started, and I'm gonna walk you through, just I want you to see this chart and see it with my eyes, see. This has just steadily gotten a little bit worse where we, our goal was always trying to be in, especially when I rode in October, I saw it pretty clear. We need to keep one truck in each city, Lexington and Thomasville. That's the bulk of the calls come to those two cities. If there's gonna be a call, statistical probability says it's gonna be one of them two cities. One truck cannot cover both them cities. Because you get on a call in Thomasville, you sure, you sure gonna have a call in Lexington. And it's probably gonna be on the other side of Lexington to get to it. So it just can't happen. Um, so we've had some issues, as you've seen here lately, where we've had to run TNTs in the outlying bases with somebody in another base trying to cover that base. You know, if you get a problem with a transport, you just get a fill-in. What you see with your eyes here is the vacancies. Tim's kind of added up and he's doing this on an average monthly basis because it fluk-, it moves around every thirty, you know, every day. You get people quits, you get people on boarded. The blue bars are the full timers. The red lines when we started this program. The green bars are the part timers. Gray lines trucks down and yellow's sick time. Now, sick time going down is a function of two things. Number one, us being a little more vigilant about people's not doing it correctly, but also less people working here. So I just want to be clear about that. But you can see the trucks out just still continue to go up because the blue bars are going up. We're getting more and more vacancies. We've got four different shifts, two that run in the day, two that run at night. The daytime shifts are getting closer to full. It's the nighttime shifts that are having struggle. We can't find people that want to run at night, particularly even more succinct, night on the weekends. So once we get to Friday, Saturday and Sunday, we really get problems. And one shift is almost decimated.
That's correct.
So in all the extra interviews we've seen from people leaving for this particular shift, it is not supervision, it is not management. Matter of fact, they have glowing reviews about that supervisor. So I don't know, it's, again, the other shift, the alternate night shift to this one, it's having some struggles as well. Getting a little bit better, but that's it, little bit better. So the program, but the program, you may say, well, the program's not working, Casey. It's going, well, again, it's because of the blue bars. The program's working because here's what's happening. The part timers are filling in the holes. They're coming in and absorbing up the work. They're diving in, working on the shifts. So without that, we would really have some struggles. And you remember the program is, I think it's two hundred for a full timer that runs on a shift and a hundred for the part-time, right?
Correct.
So we haven't changed that. Now, what we did do a few weeks ago, we moved it into the weekdays. We were starting to have problems with night during the week. And so we morphed it into the week then. That cleared that up because I didn't want to play the game of, uh, moving it from one side of the pendulum to the other, being with Friday being the demarcation line. Because then I just have people going back and forth. They're offering different dollar amounts or whatever, pushing them from one side of the of the seesaw to the other. Fix one problem, you create another. So that chart kind of sums that up. The rest of them, and I'm not gonna go all through all of them, if you just kind of flip through, all you see is trucks out uh, before the program started on Saturday, uh, Saturday through Sunday and after the program. And you can see clearly the night shifts is just what the problem continues to lie. Um, if you are curious, continue to flip, those, just say the same things to those. Go to this chart back here, or this area back here with all this information. We've spent about ninety, a little over ninety-one thousand dollars on the program since we started it back in that red line area. Most of the help goes to C-shift because as you can see, there are most of the trucks down. And again, seventy-five, eighty percent of this program is part-time driven. So they're the ones carrying the water on the, on the shift program that you're running now. I estimate if this thing were running a full year, it's gonna be somewhere between three hundred and fifty and four hundred thousand dollars. If you run it a whole twelve months like it stands now. Now we're on a different color here. I'm going through this quick, if you need any stuff, I can. I skipped some charts because it just says the same thing, but it reiterates the same point, that we got a problem on nights on weekends. Um, this is what I call the summary of the vacancies. If you look at the different shifts, twenty-five total, you see they're not evenly dispersed. Ten with C, six with D. And then this middle section here is kind of what's going on in the background. We got another person leaving on May the seventh, which obviously isn't here yet. That'll be next week. So I counted them in as an, it's gonna be a vacancy, right, come next Tuesday. Um, we've got two folks out on FMLA, I think one's coming back soon.
Potentially.
So I'm counting them in into the, the bodies ain't here to ride the truck program, even though it's not a vacancy, right? Leads from May is what I call that green line. Out and not, they spend about half the week trying to call people to run, but they also spend time trying to find people to come work here. So we've got some leads and it's a ma-, I'm, you know, right now, we're hearing some folks that are tuned from another county, actually, that may come to the tune of about five people. I spread them between the two shifts to make it kind of level it out. The goal being the bottom down there to get it more level. We've got some transfers, Outland's asked a couple of folks, can you not work the day shift and move over to night? You couldn't toss them back and forth because a human being can't work day and night and their system get messed up. So it'd be kind of a permanent shift or at least temporary till we get somebody.
Got a couple that's like a two-month trial and one of them's permanent.
So obviously, we move them over to C-shift and we bring new hires in. Our first, you know, kind of pressing question is, I, I need you to work night shift. Need you to work night shift. Um, and then we've got another part timer that's gonna go full-time in May, I'm counting that in. If all that were to occur, it could lower us down to twenty-two vacancies in just paramedics and EMTs and level it out a little bit.
Is that bill that Jarvis is running to, uh, lower the credentials for EMS and the fire, is that gonna help any? Are you sure about that?
Credentials, I think they were running a bill to try to lower the retirement.
Yeah, I'm not aware of them lowering the credentials on that.
Not lowering credentials, but they're trying to go for twenty-five-year retirement again on the state system.
It was presented yesterday at part as credential, but they, they may, they may have been mistaken. I can call Jarvis and find out exactly what that is, but, um, I thought we had talked before about, uh, the credentialing was one of the things that kept us from filling all these vacancies, not my knowledge.
Well, it is in the sense of the the College of Medical Sciences, which is, um, they're the ones that control your thousand-hour rule for paramedics. And that's, that's, but that's a whole nother process to change.
Okay.
What you need is less doctors on that group and more folks like me that manage these systems and go, listen, you can't make this so strenuous to be a paramedic. No offense to what, I'm just saying, you've made it so, kind of like we've had these conversations with soil scientists and everything else, building inspections. You've made it so difficult that I can't find anybody to work these jobs. If you flip one more page, I'm gonna stop in a second because I want to get to the two options. I just want you to see this last piece right here. So seeing all this and kind of coming up with, okay, we've got some choices here. Um, we've brought this program back before you in March, we're bringing it back now as a, as a recommendation. Okay, we at least need to continue that because again, that's what's keeping the system going. But then the strategy of, is this where we want to be? Four hundred thousand for that for a year, is it, it's working, but you see how it is working and the vacancies just continue to pile up after December. They just continued to get worse, even though the program was implemented. Um, so I started looking at, okay, what are our choices? And I'll get to this one pager here in just a second with a shift diff at night. But we could keep the program that costs that or I'll go do it now. Tim's running you in and outs of what a, say a buck and a half to run at night more per hour would look like. And you've got the options there if you do it with the FTOs and what we call the brass, folks above in the command, um, or if you just did it for paramedics and EMTs only. So you can see for the brass and everybody else, that's another two hundred thousand. I'm talking a buck and a half more an hour to run it on night shifts, to be on night shifts versus day. So if you kept this program in place, and we about have to for a little while till we fill up some more, because we couldn't pull the plug on that, now you're doing two and four up to six. now you're doing two, and four, or up to six. So in my mind, I'm thinking, okay, I know this question's coming, so I might as well go ahead and pull this information. What you see here in front of you is these counties' paramedic EMT starting, starting pay. Now, I'm not getting into like we had, like we had the conversation last July at the pay study about actual pay. What these people bring, these people in at, because I can't get apples, dapples with that, it's good. But starting pay, I can. I can pull it straight off their website, or straight off their classification plan. And so you see, and you see the vacancy rates for these counties. We're not, if you pull Guilford out of this thing, it's not that we're the worst payers on paramedics. A little bit behind on EMTs, but you see what's striking me is the vacancy rate. We're the highest on the list, and Forsyth's claiming to me they got eighteen coming in Monday to start. So if they nab all eighteen of them, they're gonna be at nineteen. That's driving me to think, what is going on here? Well, there could be a handful of reasons. Geography could be playing a role. Stanley and Davie, and I was shocked that Davie had no vacancies, and I can tell you Guilford's is right, because the manager sent me their vacancy list. They got a hundred and twenty-two paramedics and two vacancies. So that tells me, getting to that number that they're sitting at there, fill them back up.
They got how many now, Casey?
Hundred and twenty-two paramedics, and they got two vacancies.
How does that rate per population to what we got?
Uh, divide, Jason divided that in, uh, a hundred and twenty-two divided by about, what, five hundred thousand people live over there? And ours is about, um...
Hundred and seventy-two.
Seventy?
Hundred and seventy-two divided by, how many paramedics you got about?
Got a hun- oh.
Our population's a hundred and seventy-two, and we got roughly about a hundred employees, so to speak.
No, but that's everybody. How many paramedics?
I can count them.
I'd say about...
You know, just double check on that, see, the point I'm getting to, I mean, what's the ratio per paramedic?
Guilford is about one paramedic every four thousand.
Don't, don't we have about, in and about fifty-six paramedics, isn't that about right?
It would probably be close, cause there's probably ten or fifteen EMTs.
Fifty to sixty. We counted it the other day, what was it, it's about, it's about sixty, wasn't it?
So do that math.
So sixty, just say sixty divided by a hundred and seventy thousand.
Uh, a hundred and seventy thousand, yeah.
One paramedic to every twenty-eight hundred, roughly, population.
Heck, we better off.
Ratio wise, yeah, it's just we can't fill them.
Yeah, I was just trying to see if ours was overwork per population compared to theirs, but it's not.
I know it wasn't so long ago, though, Guilford had quite, had a, a very high vacancy rate. Maybe back last fall, I don't know exactly what it was.
No, I, I know that, uh, city of Greensboro, the fire department there, I'm almost positive they have some paramedics on, in the fire department that run on medical calls there as well.
Yes.
So, and that's, you figure that's a huge chunk of the population, that's about three hundred and thirty thousand, something like that.
Yeah, High Point probably does too.
Has anybody talked to them, see how they got their vacancy rate down so quick?
I, I didn't get into it with Michael about that, um, because I just assumed when he popped, they went to this number here last fall, as did Forsyth, cause Forsyth wasn't quite this high last fall, um...
Are you talking about starting pay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, the sheets behind this simply just add up scenarios, but, but let's get to that piece. So if you wanted to continue the program, which again, I think we about got to for a little while, at four hundred a year, I'm fast forwarding to how much things cost a year, cause we ain't been running it a whole year, so it's ninety right now. If this shift diff at a buck fifty an hour was something we wanted to try in combination with that, I'd go back to six hundred for a whole year, right? If the paramedics and EMTs, of course, if you move them, you're back to this conversation we had last July of everybody above that, pretty much, you gotta roll. I just took a stab at these sheets behind it, saying, okay, what if we moved everybody ten percent? And then the cola piled on top of that. That ended up being five hundred.
So would we do that?
So, it's just, it's about the same price as this. Now, there's a caveat to that. There's two, there, everything in this thing, this scenario's got pros and cons, so I'm not trying to sell you on something and say, let's just solve everything. I'm telling you, I want you to understand the different, there's, all these plans have got something wrong with them. And they got upsides, potential upsides too. So we could make the, if you make straight pay moves for people working here, what if you still don't fill them? That's an option, that's possible. Um, and again, I'm not trying to chase Guilford, I don't need to get to Guilford's number, I just need to get close enough to disincentivize you from leaving. Cause I've worked over there before and drove from here, it's not fun. So I don't need to go to their level of pay, but I need to get close enough for somebody to do the math and go, I'm not driving over there. So the number, if I, if it ten percent in the cola would get our new starting salaries up come July one, to around forty-seven and a half. That puts us dead there, you see with Forsyth, or a little bit better. And their pay ranges are gonna move too, mind you, come July one. All these peoples will. So the budget you're gonna get next Monday night's got a cola in it, a certain percentage, you know how that works. We move the grades by a little bit less than that, so you don't end up getting the same people compressed on each other again. So, we, we're gonna move, they're gonna move too, naturally, for starting pay. But my point is that, and then you've got the part timers. So at five hundred for moving them, if you're go, if you say, I'm gonna keep the part timers hourly pay equitable with the full timers, you do need to move them. If you, you don't have to. Tony's here this morning, if we need to talk to him about that, you don't have to. That saves you some more portion of that. The two of them together is about seven hundred. The two of these programs for the shift diff and the program we're running now is about four. If we did start to fill, I mean, five, no, six, sorry, if we started to fill up, the, the program to run on the shifts is naturally gonna cannibalize itself. Cause as you get more vacancies, there's less shifts to pick. See what I'm saying? So all these part timers that are running, that would go da, it would naturally start to fade out. You could, it could, and that would be the goal, as you get vacancies down. We could get from twenty-five to what, ten? And we weren't, we were at tenish last summer. We could get back to last summer, we wouldn't necessarily need as much of this shift program. It would naturally start to fade out, is my point.
And along with that is that the more the, you know, we've got our part timers working, and they can only work a thousand hours, so they can only, we can only do so much with the bunch we got. We've got an elevated number of vacancies with an elevated number of hours. Some of our folks are gonna run out of time by about August or September.
Right, we end up, you know, we added part timers, we fill them up, they come wanna run this program, then they get to their bump up against their hour max by like September, and we end up back in front of y'all to give them benefits and increase the hours.
Or increase part timers.
Or increase the number of part timers. Um, go back to our privatization, folks coming in to run too, that plays a role here too. I haven't gotten anywhere with certain group, but, uh, P-TAR has put in an application. So it's coming before you hopefully, what, one of these meetings in Mar- in May. We had a little issue with insurance to work out with them, I think we've gotten squared away. So they wanna run, um, and I think they're probably gonna run BLS truck, be my hunch. Um, they're at twenty dollars an hour for these EMTs. Running just convalescents.
What is our EMT?
We are at six, uh, fifteen and some change. If we did that ten percent move, it'd put us to the seventeen.
Casey, what, I think it was last week, or Alton, somebody, uh, didn't we have twelve or fourteen people out one day? And eleven or twelve out, which is six of the eleven trucks.
That's correct, we did. We got everything kinda pulled back up at the last minute, so to speak, but it's a struggle, it's...
I know y'all busted your hump, and you got, you got it fixed a lot, but in the beginning, we had, we were down on six of the eleven trucks on one day.
It's our, it's this weekend. Sunday nights, five trucks.
Yeah.
Okay, we're doing it again this weekend?
I mean, so it's, you know, the part timers date, I, we can't, they'll come in at the last minute, some will, some won't, you know, and that kinda drives us nuts too, as far as planning purposes. So we start, as soon as we get through Sunday, marking the test, Monday morning, he's getting a text from me, where are we at with shifts for the rest of the week? And it's a game you're playing of, the week's one conversation, but that weekend's a separate conversation. You know, when you get to Thursday, it's gonna be, you know, you better shore it up. And A and D, when they run together, like next week it'll be a little bit better, because again, you got those two shifts are doing a little bit better. Um, it's, C group just decimated.
I got a quick question. How many of these vacancies are, um, EMTs, and how many are paramedics?
They fluctuate back and forth. You can, if they got a vacancy, they can, they could fill it with a paramedic or an EMT.
I get that, but what, what is it, we got twenty-some people?
None technically for EMTs. And mo- all them are...
We're pretty, we're pretty close on EMTs right now. In fact, you know, he was talking about privatiz- privatizing the BLS stuff. And we're in, we're in the process of doing our own BLS truck with EMTs to try to help some of these ALS trucks and alleviate some of those calls. So we're, we're already moving forward to do that ourselves.
So out of these twenty-three people, all those pretty much are paramedics?
Pretty much, yeah.
Uh, let me ask you this, when's the last time we went up on our rates for...
Haven't been since I've been here, uh, that I'm aware of.
That fluctuates with...
There's, there's the Medicaid, P, M.O.S., yeah.
Our rates, like a hundred and thirty percent of CMS, if I remember correctly.
Medicare rates. Fluctuates with the Medicare rates. But I've, I, I didn't ask my policy, she, she said our rates are still lower than others. I, I, and as far as comparison, I hadn't had time to look at that.
Well, you know, we, we talk about money, and I'm not saying we're gonna need to do something here, but we may have an avenue that, you know, you gotta pay for your services and, uh...
Mark is that?
We hadn't went up on our rates in a while, then it is what it is.
To, to what he's talking about, you and I talked one time, is that's, is that set by Medicaid, Medicare, or Kim? How does that work exactly? The raising weights and rates and stuff?
Uh, Medicare, Medicaid sets rates each year, but ours is a hundred and thirty percent of that, that was set back. I can't remember how many years ago, one budget.
We, we can.
Yes, sir.
Four or five years ago.
Okay, I misunderstood you then before. I thought what you were saying is, they dictate what we can charge.
No, 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 you control the percentage.
We gotta charge anything we wanna charge.
Okay, okay, I just misunderstood what he was telling me then.
Medicare's only gonna pay... I'm sorry, but, it, ours is based off of their rate, and I think that was done that way, so every year, or every few months, whenever they change their rates, you wouldn't have to come back in front of you guys and gals and let them know what the new charges were to get you to vote on it.
That brings up a good issue, because I'd also like to know what these other counties' rates are.
Right. Yeah, I think that's fair to look at.
Yeah, I mean, if they're charging twenty-five percent more than we're charging, you know?
That makes sense.
That could solve a lot of our problems.
What is the, uh...
Well, when somebody needs ambulance, they don't really care what it costs, they don't think, they, they want one there, and they worry about paying for it later, you know?
Or not paying for it later.
Or not paying for it.
What is, what is the collection, um, on the amount that Medicare doesn't cover?
That would be a billing question, Casey.
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head.
Well, if we're not, if we, if we've got a terrible collection rate on what we charging now, going up, not gonna do it.
I think we have a pretty good collection rate most of the time. You, you usually, you usually set a mark every year, and we come fairly close to that, don't you? On what you wanna, the revenue income is.
I mean, it's been...
They're doing better because they hide that far.
And we got them, we got the softwares now to go in and get the stuff too. Um, but the percentage of what counties are charging is what they're asking about.
Yeah.
That could be the difference right there, as far as making money to fund different things or whatever, um...
At one time, it was eighty-seven percent, we collected, then it dropped down to eighty-two percent. So I don't know where we're at now.
Your commercial insurance is two ninety for ambulance.
Well, if y'all could look at that, but, you know, if we need to do something with this pay, we need to do it, cause we need, we need service.
I, I think that's what we should do, Commissioner Yates, because, I mean, to me, these incent, I'm like you, these incentives and stuff are not something that's gonna be there, so we'll wind up eventually with the same issue. So if we, if we...
I don't want you to feel like you didn't do nothing good, cause you did.
I, I know we did.
You just, you just...
We, we said up front, we had to try and see if it'd work.
And it, but it did. You, it was a smart, clever, I'll use clever, how about that? It was a clever, it is a clever idea. It's just, it's enticed a lot of part timers to run, the part timers run the system. And we really need a little bit more leveling here. We need more full timers if we can attract them.
Stability.
Um, some stability, cause it's just getting kind of, um, volatile, is what's happening.
So if you do away with it, is it gonna hurt you?
Well, that's what I'm saying, I, I think, I think you're gonna have to run it for a while, cause we obviously couldn't cut it. And if this thing, if you fill it up, one's gonna, naturally, it's gonna go down, cause there's less shifts to pick. Now, if it, I, I know, cause I'm anticipating Commissioner Yates asking me this question. If, what are you gonna do if it don't fill the vacancies? Well, then we probably are gonna have to run both programs for a little while, we figure out something else. But I don't see how moving it up won't drop this vacancy. I mean, it's, it's evident for me from looking at these other counties, these vacancy rates are going down as they're... And again, geography, I does think matters. I'm glad you asked me to pull Stanley and Davie, because there's something going on there where they're a little too far away from Forsyth and Guilford to get pinched.
They also run twenty-four seventy-two.
Well, and that could be another part of it too, right?
Run what?
They run twenty-four hours on and seventy-two off, but their call volume's low enough that they can still run twenty-four hour shifts. We don't have that luxury here, because our folks may run twelve, twelve calls in a twelve-hour shift, so there's no way they can run twenty-four hours straight without being just completely fatigued.
Well, again, do they have more people per ratio? I think we need to be looking at ratio, because, uh...
Yeah, I, I, I can't answer that honestly right now.
That gets to chasing, um, a little tougher, not that we can't do it, authorized positions versus live bodies. Where were so many vacancies, you'd really want the ratio for, for, we can get the authorized right now, but I'd really wanna know too, you know, how many, how many are we down to really running calls every night? You know, it's, um...
As far as the ratio, you know, our goal is to provide ALS service to our citizens within eight minutes. So we've got everything geographically spaced out. I understand the ratio part of it, but it's our goal to, to get you that service within that eight minutes or less. That's, that's when time really counts, you know, like during cardiac arrest and that sort of thing.
The, uh, action item on this is, is to, uh, direct the staff to continue this program?
It's, it's, well, it could be twofold, it could change. It's depending on the will of this board. I mean, I think the program's got to stay for a little while, till we slide out of it into something else. But I guess my question for the board is, I'm not hearing the differential thing is where you wanna go, cause you feel like maybe that's just more temporary measures to get to somewhere. Are you wanting to look at this bigger piece of paper with the pay part?
Mr. Manager, I actually had a question about that. When you was figuring, you said you had figured some things, and I think you said it panned out to about seven hundred thousand. Was you talking about the, the raising the ten percent with shift diff?
No, no, raise the ten, let the cola pile on top of that, you know, here in July.
Continue the incentive program.
Continue the incentive program.
I know, I know shift diff, I know this one fifty is, is spot on for the industry across board. The hospitals are doing a dollar fifty to two dollars an hour, uh, and, and I know across the industry as far as EMS. So that, that dollar fifty is, is in line with, with industry standards, um...
But you're not proposing it, though?
I, I, me, and that's up to y'all, but I would pick...
I like the, the ten percent rate.
I would pick one or the other, cause to me, the shift, I like, when I first heard the shift diff idea, I was like, you know, I know hospitals do that, that's an idea. I wanted you to see both ways, but then I saw these vacancy rates in the pay, and I was like, I think we're headed toward a move.
Yeah.
That's what it felt like to me, and so I was like, well, why don't we just go ahead and move and not do the shift diff? It's almost cost-wise about the same. If we run that program and the shift diff is six hundred thousand, if we did the pay, it's seven hundred. So, we slide out of the program as this thing starts to fill up. And hopefully, it'll happen fairly quick. I mean, I'm not saying it's gonna happen next week or the week after, obviously, but over, hopefully this summer, we can get more people recruited in.
The other counties had good success with their pay raises.
Let me, let me ask you this, Alan.
Yes, sir.
I just happened to have a doctor's appointment last week, and my nurse was a, um, a paramedic captain from Guilford, Kim. And she said, uh, they sent out a survey to all their EMTs and paramedics, not the upper brass or anything. Uh, a survey monkey of asking them, what could be a better place, what we, what could we do better to make this a better work environment? She said that helped better than anything that, uh...
Now, when I first come in, I had staff meetings, and I asked folks to send me their top three priorities, the things they wanted to change or could be fixed. I think we got a handful of responses, but, um, it, we may have, you know, maybe we could do something anonymously, cause people were...
That's what she said this was, it was anonymous.
It needs to be anonymous, but we, we've already took an attempt at that, but maybe we could take a, a different attempt, so to speak.
And I'm gonna circle back around to what I said a while ago, can we not call whoever's over EMS in Guilford and say, look, you got a one percent vacancy rate?
We can check with Jim.
Tell me how you do it, you know? Cause it's ironic, that's where she come from.
Right.
Of course, I tried to get her to come down here and work part-time, she said, look, both of my shoulders are gone, and one knee. She said thirty years is enough for me, so, but I, I thought that was...
I remember that remark.
Yeah. But I wanted to ask her what kind of questions was on that survey, so the next, I'll see her in a month, so I'll ask her maybe what kind of questions they had on that survey, or get a copy, but...
Another thing that you've turned me on to, Tony's got the, um, uh, the pro- zip recruiter, and he's targeting paramedics and EMTs low in the region. I think we're gonna try to send something out to them, in like a mailer or whatever, and say, cause we know you're looking, cause we've got zip recruiter, so... There's, it's not, I showed you that thing with, uh, the lead, just so you know, there, there, there's attempts, massive attempts to get people to come, it's just I'm stuck at this point.
You know, one of the leads, they, they, they are in another county, but they wanted to see what we could do on our pay in comparison to what they're making. That was the question.
I think there's some, uh, enough, enough question...
I think there's some, uh, enough, enough questions, uh, if there's a consensus to, uh, direct the staff to go ahead and move forward on this program. And y'all kinda bring it back to us, 'cause there's, there's a lot of things that say, well, we could do this and we could do that, that we need, we need to know what the effect of doing this and doing that might be. So if we tell you to go ahead with the program, um, isn't that gonna be sufficient? Or do you need this, you need more direction than that?
Yeah, because it gets us to just doing what we're doing now.
Well, what is your recommendation?
My recommendation is do the, do the pay increases off this big sheet, continue the program as we're doing right now, don't change anything, and let's, let's attempt that. As vacancies fill up, the other program will start to slide out.
Is that satisfactory with you folks?
Do you want a motion?
Wait a minute.
No, we don't need a motion, we need a consensus. It's just to direct the staff.
One more question. So your proposal is the green section to increase the five hundred dollars plus four percent for the whole?
Yes, do the, do this.
Your proposal.
Right, right, do the ten percent, let the COLA pile on top of that. It will take the new minimums for, um, paramedic closer to forty-seven and a half come that, come July one, which as you can see from this, gets us a little bit above Forsyth. We're not the best, obviously, against Guilford. Again, I don't need to go to, to what they're going to exactly.
Does that answer your question?
Well, I have one more. This don't, ten percent on the EMT side don't really put you competitive with everybody else.
It gets, yeah, it gets the average to thirty-five, which is the average at the bottom there, you can see. It puts you.
Well, so I ain't saying ten percent, just 'cause it's good for the paramedics don't mean it's good for the EMTs.
I can do some different version for them.
'Cause again, if we're gonna do it, you know, you at thirty-one there and I'm looking at the first one, two, three, four, five. Um, you know, you're thirty-nine, thirty-seven, forty, thirty-seven. So if you only do, uh, ten percent, you adding thirty-one hundred bucks to it, so you're gonna be at thirty-five. You still below everybody else.
Right. Well, or at least below the bottom two, right, right.
Below the top five, you know, I mean, we gotta worry about that top five.
I, I get Davy. We might wanna look at how the, the EMTs and the paramedics are, are spaced at the other places too, what they're.
You're pushing me into doing pay studies, I have a day job too, so I'd pull this off and, uh, you're talking to the pay and comp classification of this county, so, um, I can't pull that off.
Would twelve percent do what Todd's talking about? For EMTs? For EMTs?
It'll get, it'll get back to that compression thing a little bit, conversation we had. Um, it'll push the EMTs a little closer up, that's the way it goes. You can't get away from compression.
We were good people in both positions.
I understand that, I just want you to know what you're dealing with.
That's what I meant proportionate, is you, you drag a little bit of compression there on them.
We want good EMTs and we want good paramedics too, you know, so.
You dance around with a problem or you can fix it? So what are the other ones?
I think we, I think we should do just what Todd's talking about and bring the EMTs up. And that way, if we do this right, hopefully, it won't take long and this incentive program will, like you said, work its way out, will have good, solid pay, we won't have to worry about some of this other stuff, 'cause he's right, ten percent's not gonna get them into the thirty-seven, forty, thirty-seven, thirty-nine.
It'll be ten plus the COLA. So come July one, that COLA will be, you know, five hundred plus four percent. So it's gonna be more like fifteen percent move total.
But twelve percent only adds like six bucks.
It only adds two more points to the original idea, so again.
Seven hundred dollars, so.
Right, it's not gonna be massive change, and it's not that many of them. So, Mr. Yates is right, if you just, I, I'm, I'm good with that. I just want you to know what's, what's going on with pay. When you just move one, you just make compression, you can't get away from that, though. I'm not telling you that to be like, um, punitive, I want you to know this is how the game plays with pay. And that's fine, so twelve and ten would be fine with me, I can cook that up really easy.
We've gotta get good people in here, I'm gonna steal his words, but we've gotta get good people in here and we've gotta stop throwing Band-Aids at this, so I think that's what we need to do.
Well, this is something you can't play with, if you want an ambulance, you, you gotta have one, so. If it's sitting over here at the shop with no drivers and.
Right.
We might as well sell the ambulances and, uh.
Y'all understand. So where do, where does that put the EMTs absent the COLA?
I don't know, Mr. Shell, off the top of my head, I'll have to.
Well, but EMTs.
It puts them at like thirty-seven.
Yeah, it'll put them about thirty-seven when it's all said and done. Even with the COLA, it'll be a little higher than the bottom and maybe even with Randolph, kinda sorta.
Should they put them at thirty-seven or where are they to begin with?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
You know, I mean, it puts them competitive with these, I mean, these, these are the people we gotta compete with every day, so. Yeah, it is, but, I mean, they're underpaid now by looking at those.
Way underpaid.
And, and I don't want us to be known to be under, the most underpaid county around, it's.
Or, or, or the best, basically, for that matter.
Right.
I, I don't, uh, a quick question, and I don't want an answer here, but I wanna give you some work.
How's that on my capital, I'm sorry?
So we have, if, if we are having problems with a particular shift that's creating most of these sidelines, I think we need to look at that between you and Casey as well.
We have been, we have been. Like I said, and the folks that's left that shift, they've even wrote letters, you know, giving accolades to that supervisor, so I'm not real sure why that particular.
Don't know where it's at.
It, it don't make any sense.
There's gotta be a connection somewhere and I can't figure out where that's at.
We're going back to James's point, I mean, is there a need for a differential shift pay? I mean, is that?
Across the board would be our best, our best bet right now.
I, I think.
I, I, I feel like.
So Commissioner Yates.
I wanna keep quality people and gain quality.
Mid, midpoint of what we've just talked about is thirty-eight, eight, eighty-four, seventy-five. So if we do what we just said and we bump EMTs up to thirty-seven something, I mean, it is.
The COLA's gonna put them.
The COLA, the COLA will take care of that.
You're hoping they're gonna come to work.
Because the median is whatever I just said, thirty-eight, eight, eight, four point seven five. So I think with COLA, with that five hundred and COLA, that'll put them above, at or above this, is that correct?
Yeah, I, I think, I, without doing it again, uh, let's keep it simple, let's stay with Vice Chairman's twelve and ten approach.
Yes, 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 that's what I.
I got a rough estimate, a little, eh, somewhere between twenty and twenty-one dollars an hour for EMTs.
And that would be considered, that's what, that's what PTAR's doing right now, twenty, for convalescent cause. So we're running, obviously, more strenuous calls than that.
And I think that'll stop the bleeding from us losing people as well.
We'll start retaining more and we can start gaining.
Do you, do y'all understand, Casey, uh, what the direction would be from the board?
I think so. I think so.
Will this be put on?
You understand?
Yes, sir.
Will this be put on for Monday?
What?
That's up to them, I mean, I might have to approve it today, but I mean, if we put it on Monday, we'll put it on, we'll recalculate everything up, have this sheet available for you so you can see what the numbers look like, have it on.
Can we approve it today?
Can we just approve it today, Mr. Chairman?
It probably.
We don't generally do it, the votes on, on Thursday morning, put it on the agenda for Monday.
Okay.
You wanna put it on a consent or you wanna put it on a discussion and y'all come back with some of the other stuff?
That'd be fine. Unless there's more questions. Unless there's more, the rest of it was about acquiring money to pay for the program. I'll, I'll get those information, 'cause that won't, what I'm hearing with my ears, that won't stop you. It's just that you'd like to have the funds to be able to do some other things too, we'll, we'll dig into that.
If we approve this Monday, this, you ain't gonna change anything between now and Monday.
Right, it ain't gonna help Saturday, Sunday night, she has problems, right.
Yeah, we'll have to line everything up when it starts and all that anyhow.
Well, you got one day, how much can you do today? Okey-dokey. Appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work.
Thank you very much.
Next on it is the Davidson County Child Fatality Prevention Team annual report. That's a mouthful.
I'm not willing. Um, she is out of town, she apologizes for not being here, but for those of you that don't know me, I'm Mary Lou Collet and I'm the nursing director, and I'm freezing, I'm just freezing. Yours knows I freeze in our meeting, but I'm like this.
It's always cold in here.
Ooh, my nose is like white. Okay, so you have a copy, I think, in your information as far as the recommendations from the Child Fatality Prevention Team. And so what we are tasked to do is to give you the recommendations that we sent to the state. What the Child Fatality Prevention Team is, is every county has one. It's not a health department team, it is a community team. So they are you guys even appoint people, um, the chief medical examiner appoints people. I mean, there, it, it comes, there's a group of us that come together. So this is our recommendations about, uh, gun safety and, and that kinda thing. So we can do things related to legislation or we can do local. This one here is a local recommendation for us in our county to put some information out just for our county for gun safety. That means locking your guns up, that means safety locks and then, things like that. We have a brochure and draft, um, it is not ready yet, but that is for the Child Fatality Team. And, um, hopefully it will go out with pediatrician visits. Um, some of the folks on our committee said they'd like to have it at their place to give out for the families that they serve. Um, we were hoping, and some of our team members said that they would be glad to go to the gun shops and, you know, see if they would put it out. It's not that you can't have guns, it's that when you want to be safe about it, lock it up, those kinds of things. Um, I'm not familiar with guns, I'm not a gun person, I don't even own one, but my son hunts and he has them. So, but they are in a safe. Um, so there is an initiative coming out, I was at a summit recently and it's called NC Safe. You all may have heard it, but it is coming out, um, statewide, I think in June, you're gonna start seeing some commercials. And that too is, uh, about locking your guns up. Um, I think the safety locks, Thomasville Police Department already does those kinds of things. I did learn, um, in our child fatality meeting, the SROs in Thomasville already do a program with the ninth graders as far as, um, uh, education on gun safety and just, uh, making people aware. I did not have my statistics on, in my brain at my Board of Health meeting this last time, but I, it's alarming when I was at the summit that thirty percent of high school students can get a firearm, uh, without any help from adults in less than an hour. I mean, that's alarming, I mean, that you can just go and pick up a gun and find it within an hour without asking somebody, where do I get one from? And what I didn't hear was a lot of folks, you see it in, and, and breaking into cars and, and things like that. They are getting a lot of guns from breaking into car, across the state. I don't know about in our county, I haven't asked, but across the state, that's what I heard at the summit. So, um, but that is what, our recommendation for, uh, this year, not to say we didn't have other deaths, but there were several deaths related to intentional gun use and, uh, accidental, uh, gun, uh, guns in the home, so.
Is that by children or any?
This is, we wrote a seventeen, our child, it's the, it, we are studying death, or reviewing deaths for the previous year, so this is for twenty-twenty-one, 'cause we reviewed them in twenty-twenty-two and I'm reporting now in twenty-twenty-three. So it is all deaths from children and it, if, it may be self-harm, it may be accidental, but it's all deaths of children. So the other deaths we have, you know, illnesses, we have, um, preterm births. I mean, even our preterm births, they may be nineteen weeks, they may be, you know, we look at prenatal care, we look at several different things when, when we've got, uh, different types of things. So it's not just these kinds of accidents, motor vehicle accidents, ATVs, um, those things is what we, we look at throughout the year when we're looking at these deaths. It's not a, a good, it's not fun to, to be on this committee. It's one of the hardest committees I think I have ever been on in this county, um, to have to review every child death that happens. Um, and it's not like a punitive thing, we're not looking for, well, you did this wrong and you did this wrong. We're looking at maybe some system failures that we might can make recommendations for, you know, the helmet laws came from child fatality types of things, uh, and they pushed it from all the counties. That's been years ago, but, um, those types of changes, I think with the ATVs, I think there was some changes with ages, maybe, um, I think all that was pushed through child fatality at some point. Um, so good committee, they do a lot of work, there's one, like I said, one in every, uh, county. They compile that, all of the, uh, recommendations from the state is compiled. Then you have the North Carolina Task Force, Child Fatality Task Force. We're a team and then you have the task force. And then they look at everything and, and kinda compile to see what they wanna do from there. Any questions? I'll try my best, I might have, I did bring my little, uh, manual in case I didn't know, but I will, I've been on this committee for quite some time. I am the review coordinator, uh, for it, not the chair, but I have been in my time at the Health Department in between health directors and things like that, stepping in.
Well, it's important to, to reduce child fatalities, but, um, how do you enforce that?
We, we're not the enforcer.
I mean, how, how would we enforce it?
The only time that you would be, you would be asked, and what I'm understanding and how I understand this, is if we do a recommendation and that you wanna get behind and help support that recommendation. Say, eh, I don't know if you have it in front of me, and, but we could put something and include county commissioners or whoever in our recommendation and then that proposed action, you're gonna partner with the Child Fatality Team to do X, Y, Z for this county or that kinda thing, you can help push things up. But these recommendations go up, but as far as actionable, since I've been here, there's not been anything actionable other than reporting out. And if there's something that you see that you want to get behind, then, uh, that would be, I guess, the next step for that.
Some questions from the board?
It's how I'm understanding it.
What, what, uh, what was the child fatality rate in twenty-twenty-one in Davidson County?
We had seventeen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen child fatalities.
What was the leading two causes of the fatalities?
We had, uh, the, uh, I would say the majority of our child fatalities are prob, and that one was preterm types of things.
Which what?
Preterm, we have a lot of preterm, uh, deaths, people that, uh, are nineteen weeks, twenty weeks, twenty-four weeks, we have a lot of child deaths with that, but we had, um.
So that'd be the leading cause?
Not always, but we did have.
But I'm talking about in.
Of the seventeen this time.
In twenty-twenty-one.
Of the seventeen this time, that's probably what I saw. Um, this particular with the guns, we typically, we had a little bit more than normal. I don't remember the number with this, but the team felt it was, uh, important to do the gun safety, um, especially with a push, uh, with the state too. This has been, at the summit, it was a huge talk, but the guns, I think we, out of the seventeen, might have been four, maybe we had. Now, I'm trying, I'm going off of my memory, but I think I didn't bring, um, everything broken down. But we've had, uh, unsafe sleep. Question.
What'd you say, unsafe what?
Safe sleep, co-sleeping.
Mm-hmm.
That type of thing, is there anything else?
I'm good. If you could get us, I'd like to have a breakdown of what the, what it is, the child fatality in twenty-twenty-one, ranking four of these or six of these or eight of these, so.
Oh, yeah, I can give you, I just, yes, I can definitely get you that, um, and maybe I did bring it, but, um.
Mary Lou, would you mind forwarding, or, I'm, I'm trying to remember if I got it in an email, I don't think I did, but I know you presented it the other day at the Health Board meeting. Would you mind, uh, sending the, those brochures that you showed us as well? What the, what the team has recommended?
Yes, and that is the Child Fatality Team, not the Health Department.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
It's gonna be, uh, it will not go out or do any, until you take it back to the Child Fatality Team and then they, uh, say yea or nay with that. Um, unsafe sleep, I don't know if y'all remember, the year before that, we had a lot of co-sleeping. A lot of co-sleeping, you had a lot of people that were, uh, using, abusing, uh, medications, um, and then you had unsafe sleep. I don't remember the numbers, but you had a lot of unsafe sleep going on with that, um, as well for child fatality. But I can get you that information, um.
What about CIT, is that included in it? CIT, is that included in?
Yes and no, they do not, uh, recognize SIDS anymore because of, um, they recognize it, but there's, you don't see a diagnosis come back from the medical examiner. Mark might can speak to it, well, Mark's gone. But anyway, because there's so many things that are in the cribs, they put pillows and they put, um, teddy bears and they co-sleep and then there's big comforters.[1793.41] So, when you get a report back where you used to see SIDS, you're not seeing SIDS anymore. So, matter of fact, we used to be required to have SIDS counselors at the Health Department, and there's no longer a requirement for that because it's, it's, that's not necessarily in the, we don't even get a report out on that anymore.
I think what Commissioner Shore said, if we could get that information.
Yeah, do you think, and like I say, I, I haven't been in front of you all in a while, but is that something that y'all would want to see in every report for child fatality? Moving forward, would you want?
I would, sure.
Seventeen motor vehicle there were.
I would. I mean, we'll support anything to reduce the child fatality rate, you know, so, I mean, I think I'm speaking for the board here that.
Absolutely.
There's no one up here that wouldn't want to support anything to reduce that number.
Yeah, because I do the report pretty much, so I can, it's not on, we get a template from the state, so you're getting a template. The Board of Health gets the same thing you get, and this is what they require of us. But anything additional that you want, as long as I can send it, I'll be glad to, but just let me know, I just never knew that that was a need.
Yeah, some particular numbers as it, as it applies to this county.
To this county, yeah, not statewide.
Yeah, because that's all we see is this county, yeah.
And some of the questions that we've asked, that you didn't know the answer, those are good questions.
Yeah, yeah, I can get you that. Now, it may say something like, you'll, I'll get it to you, and I'll try to put it in.
Okay, yes.
I thought, I, I think that you might like to know from Debbie, that she and I are on the JCPC, and we have been working on the gun safety with, with law enforcement for several years, so that's something that you might want to share with.
And as JCPC Chair, I actually sat, sat through an NC Safe presentation by DPS yesterday morning. There's going to be toolkits coming out within the next couple of weeks, I think, they're going to try to get them out to the counties. They're really trying to get the JCPCs involved to try to get this information out, so we can, that's something definitely that we can work together on.
Yeah, at the summit, they were really wanting some volunteers on people in the counties that were, I didn't dare raise my hand, but it's, it's good information, but, I mean, there's other counties, for example, for children, and I spoke of this at one of our meetings, our Board of Health, our last one, you've got some places in counties that if you have children and the family is struggling with mental health issues with their, their kids, and they want somewhere safe to put their guns, then you've got some places in other, we don't have it here, but in other counties, and I didn't write out, I didn't have time to get all of that written out in my notes, but they will store, there may be a fee, I don't know, but they'll store these guns until that family feels safe for them to go back into their homes. So, I think we're going to see that also in June from this NC Safe kind of thing.
There's supposed to be a huge kickoff and all kinds of information coming out, because there, it's a huge initiative.
Yeah, so I'm not, I, I've only touched the surface of that at the summit, I'm, I mean, but I think that that's going to be something upcoming, which will, will be good for those kinds of things.
Well, if you can get us that information, we'd appreciate it, and we appreciate all the work that you're doing. You said we only had four due to firearms, but one is too many, so I appreciate it.
Exactly, exactly, so, well, firearms, no firearms, co-sleeping, I mean, child, child fatality, preterms, I mean, you're looking at, you want to make sure these, these ladies are getting in for prenatal care. If they're not, and they're not seeing the doctor till they deliver, and then their baby is born, I mean, you just, you want to look and see why that's happening, those kinds of things.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
We have a request to rescind the resolution to abandon Redwine Road. Mr. Leonard?
Thanks.
I wanted to highlight a portion to talk about in a few minutes.
Didn't we talk about this a few months ago?
Yep.
You did, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
We approved it, now we're going to unapprove it.
Several years, several years, several months ago, I came before the board with a request to create a resolution to allow the NC DOT to abandon maintenance on Redwine Road, and the purpose of that was we own properties on Redwine, the county does, and people were using them as dump sites. And we wanted to clean that up and be able to cut off access to this road, and the board passed a resolution in support of abandoning the maintenance of that road, and then shortly thereafter, I got a contact call from Mr. Goodson, who's here, Craig's here, of a potential client who is looking in our industrial park, and that client wanted to keep it maintained by the DOT. The DOT had not received our resolution at that time, so they haven't done anything. Nothing's in the works of abandoning the road, brought it back to case, and he said it's better to take it before you, and let's see if we can rescind your resolution so that the state will continue maintaining it, and therefore, you know, if the potential client becomes the actual client and purchaser of this property, then there's a possibility that later on, the part that's highlighted, that's the part that's on county, that's surrounded by county property, we may come back to this board and ask for another resolution to abandon just that portion, because I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the, the company, at that point, still wants the DOT to maintain the front portion of Redwine Road, and then it enters into their property. So, the request before you today, this morning, is would you be willing to rescind the resolution that you passed several months ago? And here again, nothing at the NC, they haven't done anything, so they don't even know about this, this is mainly internal, to let you rescind something that you've already passed.
Any questions?
No, I'm making a motion, we rescind the resolution.
I'll second that motion.
Let's just put this on the, maybe eighth consent agenda.
Okay.
Next is Motorola presentation on the Rave, R-A-V-E Panic Button Platform.
Good morning, Commissioners, how are you this morning?
Fine, sir.
In July of '22, the State Emergency Management went out to bid for a statewide public school panic alarm system. That was awarded in August, or opened in August of 2022, and awarded to Rave Public Safety for the school systems throughout, throughout North Carolina. What I have today for you is Alan Melvin, the industry specialist with the Intel Ed Public Safety Team, Taylor Rawls, the account manager for Motorola Solutions, Derek Duggins, the senior account manager for Motorola Solutions, Brad Allen, the Motorola Manufacturers rep for Mobile Communications of America, and Corey Woders, I hope I spelled that right, Senior Account Executive with Rave Mobile Safety. They're going to speak to you today about Rave, and then also Motorola's Command Central Aware, which is a product that I also wanted you to see, which they'll give you some more detail about, and I won't take any more time, we'll get them up here and let them show what they've got to show you.
Very good, thanks.
Mr. Chair, Board, good morning.
Good morning.
First is, yeah, go ahead. Well, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to talk a little bit while you're setting that up, give you some time there. So first, thank you. First, thank you, on behalf of the team that we have here today, and Motorola, for your support for public safety. What you've done through your support, Davidson County provides a model, collaborative model, showing that they have the best resources, the best technology, leading the industry to serve our citizens and our families. So first, on behalf of Motorola, thank you for that support. Thanks for the partnership and the ability for Motorola to partner with you and help also serve the communities. For a personal note, as a native of Davidson County and having family here, growing up here, running the streets as a firefighter, paramedic, emergency manager over the years, I personally thank you as well for that. Our team has asked me to tee up the presentation with a high-level why and a global how. We approached that why, and then they'll work into the details of the proposal that Rob has brought before you. So, in the industry as a whole, Motorola sees that our industry is made up of disparate systems. These disparate systems, whether it's a CAD program, whether it's a records program, whether it's a voice logging recorder or radio system, these different systems, whether it's one single provider providing you these solutions, or multiple providers, up to now, the trend has been that they work in silos. There may be some data sharing, but true integration has not existed. So Motorola sees this, and I call it the swivel chair effect. So imagine sitting in a comm center as a dispatcher, telecommunicator. I go here for CAD, I swivel over to this screen for my radio, I yell across the room, hey, can you run this DCI query for me, et cetera. So Motorola sees this, and what we see is the need to not only start integrating these solutions, but having that data flow seamlessly across. So if I'm running a records report in the car as a patrol officer, that same data is shared with my 911 telecommunications so I can integrate that data. I don't have to go to my CAD system, look for information pertaining to this caller, and then over to my records system and try to reconcile that data. It's all integrated and seamless flow. So thus the need for an integrated platform with data sharing across all public safety solutions that we use out in the field and in the comm center. What Motorola has done to provide that integration is through multiple acquisitions, building on our, our own platforms that we've owned and created over the last ninety-plus years, almost a hundred years now, is a true ecosystem, if you will, or platform, across all public, public safety proverbial tools they use on their belt, from call inception, whether it's a 911, or someone sending an app, through an app, a tip submit, through handling that call, processing that call, dispatching that call, reporting on it, to incarceration and everything in between. Why this is important is, again, that streamlined data flow and being able, through single views, be able to see that entire incident lifecycle, if you will, again, from call inception to closure. So that's the how and the why of what we're going to present to you today, and I'll turn it over to my colleague Alan Melvin to take this over.
Okay, thank you. Chairman McClure, Vice Chairman Yates, the county Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to be here today. My name is Alan Melvin. Forgive me, I'll stay away from the microphone, I learned to whisper in a sawmill. North Carolinian, and twenty-eight years within the Oklahoma Highway Patrol, retired as a Lieutenant Colonel, and now I get to serve in the afterlife, and I'm very grateful for that. I know Commissioner Shore's, our talk, it's a great day, anytime law enforcement can retire from the job, so thank you for the privilege of us being here today. So to top on what Derek's talking about, this is Motorola's end-to-end, and yes, we're getting to the Rave application, the Rave solution, combined with Command Central Aware, but to take this a step further, everything you see in orange is Davidson County's investments that's going on now as part of that end-to-end, that ecosystem, whether it's the watch, garden mobile, that the Sheriff Simmons and the Davidson SO carries, whether it's the radios that the EMS and Sheriff's Office carries, and I know, and I'm very passionate about Viper, that's where I got my start in technology, back in 2004, 2005. I know you all have made a large investment in Viper in coming on the statewide system. So, the other investments that y'all have made just recently, coincidentally this week, are the, is the Steel and Flex CAD and RMS system that you were using, not only you all, but also the city, best of 911, that's where that call-taking and community engagement. So whether it's a tip to citizens, and whether it's that initial 911 call, not only just for law enforcement services, but for EMS and the ENTs and paramedics that you were just talking about earlier, it goes through that process all the way through incarceration with the JMS, the jail management system, that y'all have also invested in. But today, in yellow, and you can see where that fits in, we're going to talk about Rave. My colleague Corey's going to talk to you about Rave, I'm going to talk to you about Command Central Aware, and where that fits in in the incident lifecycle, whether it's incident awareness or incident management. With that being said, I'm going to ask Corey to come up, but this is how the diagram looks. Command Central Aware that I'll go over after Corey, is kind of like a nerve center, it's an integrator. It brings in, and not just Motorola products, it can bring in cameras that the Davidson County School System has, it can bring in other third-party information and display that on the map, and we'll actually show you that, as well as other things, cameras, the local PSAP, in this case, Rob's operations with Davidson County 911, county resources based on what you want to see. This is a product with Command Central Aware that can grow, not only does it, you can bring in CAD and mobile devices, you can bring in local law enforcement, and it just doesn't stop at Davidson County SO, it could be with Chief Lomich and Lexington D. as well. So, this just kind of gives you a diagram overview of all the things that we're Rave integrating into Command Central Aware can bring to the camera. With that being said, Corey.
I've already said all of this presentation. Good morning, Commissioners, my name's Corey, also here in North Carolina, I'm down the street in there. Happy to be here, and thank you for your time. So, the team brought me in to just kind of give you some high-level functionality about the Rave Panic Button. As Alan said, it plugs right into the Aware with many other components, so at the PSAP, you know, you're going to have one pane of glass to see all of that data. And just to give you a little bit of background, we created the Panic Button back in 2012, shortly after the Sandy Hook shooting. The Rave executives actually went out on-site, worked with the staff and faculty there to try to understand how we could really expedite those emergency communications, not only with the people on-site, but also with the PSAP to get the responders moving quickly. Since then, the Panic Button now is the most widely deployed Panic Button in the United States. I think we're in about fourteen thousand schools. It was mentioned that we recently, I think Rob mentioned it, that we recently won the statewide deployment here for all of the public and charter schools in the state of North Carolina. I know two of the three schools here in Davidson are coming on board as well. So really big in the schools, but we've seen over the last three, four, five years that a lot of state and local governments, corporations, enterprises, healthcare facilities are starting to adopt this, this technology as well. So if you can imagine, all of you could have this on your, your smartphone, see somebody walking up the, you know, parking lot with a rifle, you simply press the active assailant button for a second and a half, and it's going to start doing a lot of things. So I'll kind of walk through some of the functionality there. So in essence, it's a one-click mobile emergency activation. All of these buttons are preconfigured, we can put in floor plans of this facility, emergency contacts, access points, a ton of detail. So one of the, when one of those buttons is activated, all of that information is going to pop up in the PSAP, so they're immediately going to have situational awareness, they're going to be able to share that with the responders, so they know exactly what they're driving into. Another key component, just as important, if not more so, all of the employees in this facility would get the notification as well, so it's not just an alarm going off, you're going to get a, you can get a push notification, a text message, emails, we can take over desktops, so we have a lot of modalities that we can tap into. Alan mentioned some of the technology with Motorola, that's all going to be integrated as well. So I think that's very, very important, the fact that the folks on-site are going to be made aware as to what's going on. So I touched on the 911 integration piece. Additionally, you can see on the far right there, we have two-way communication capabilities, so not only can you activate the button, notify everybody what's going on, but now we can start triaging that situation, and that's just a basic example there. So, you know, after it's been activated now from the PSAP, we can start sending out messages to, you know, see what the status is of the employees within that facility. You know, red button there, I still need help, green button, I'm safe. So you click that button, the next screen that pops up allows you to free-form other information, so maybe you're hiding in a closet on the second floor, you can send that information, it's going to be related back to the 911 center, and again, we can direct the responders on where they need to go. All of this information is going to pop up in Aware, and it's in a, it's a map depiction with specific GPS locations as well. So that's what we mean by the two-way communication piece there. Yeah, I kind of touched on this, again, that's what it looks like, you got the five buttons, the emergencies, active assailant, fire, medical, direct dials to PD as well as 911. All can be preconfigured on who you're sending those messages to, with the detailed information, but then at the bottom, you'll notice there's a staff assist button, and that's more for your daily communications, that's not going to call 911, but if you need to send out a message to everybody in this building or another government building, you can have preloaded templates, click the staff assist and shoot that off. And then, as I mentioned, you can send this out via text, push notification, and email, and then the CAP piece, that stands for Common Alerting Protocol, and that allows And that allows us to tie into other modalities like PA systems or sirens. We can even put a school or a building like this into a lockdown. We can engage the door locks. If they're CAP compliant, then we can set all of that off. And then on the other side of that, as Alan mentioned, that's going to populate into the Aware module. So Rob and his folks are going to be able to see that on one pane of glass and all the details there. And then we also have a web-based piece that could be here or with your police department, whomever. It's called RAVE Command View, so they would have that same visual as well. So that's kind of the 30,000-foot view of the RAVE panic button and its functionality. So I'll just pause there and see if you guys have any questions.
Actually, I do. So as a police officer, there's a couple of other apps out there that I'm sure you're aware of. And I just want to see if it's some of the similar functionality. Like I have one on my phone that alerts me to any active shooter anywhere in the US. And then I can say that I'm either a uniformed officer responding or I'm in plainclothes responding. So as a law enforcement officer here in Davidson County, do we have that same availability with this app? I mean, could I download this? I just tried to download it and it says that I've got to get with somebody to my institution or whatever, put my phone number in. But so I guess what I'm saying is a teacher sees Johnny coming up the street with an AR-15 and she hits her active alert button. Is that going to go out to all law enforcement officers in Davidson County or in North Carolina, as far as that goes? Because you've got troopers and everybody else, ATF, FBI, so on and so forth. Would that go out to any law enforcement officer that had this app? And could they instantly see that there was a school shooting at Lexington Middle School or an active shooter at Lexington Middle School and let somebody know that they're in route?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's configurable. So again, we'd call it RAVE facility. That's the dashboard where you could set all that up, you know, what the messaging would be and who's going to be sent to. Obviously, it's going to go to the PSAP for an active assailant. But it would make sense also to send it out to the police officers within Davidson County. And I think you're speaking about the HERO app first.
Yes.
So some stark differences there. That's, you know, it's going to send that out to any officers that might be in the area, right? And so then it's not a unified response because 911 doesn't know about it. Now we have folks showing up with guns and they're not, you know, part of the command. So that's a big difference. And I don't believe that the HERO app also has a real tight integration with the PSAP like the panic button does. But to answer your question, yes, we could certainly.
I'm not favoring the HERO app. I'm just asking, because what I'm asking is, as a law enforcement officer in this county, I'm driving to the grocery store with my wife, but my phone goes off and the RAVE app tells me that there's an active shooter at Lexington Middle School. What I want to be able to do is hit a button that say, because I'm with my wife, obviously I'm not in uniform, but I'm a plainclothes law enforcement officer and I am responding. Is what I would, I'm asking is, does this have the ability to do that?
It does.
Okay.
And so again, it's configurable, that you would receive it, first of all, but then that two-way community component would kick in. So you could communicate that you're in route and they'll see that back on the RAVE aware within the PSAP.
Steve, you got a question?
Does it go through the 911 center, the alert?
Yes.
And then it's dispatched from there, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's right.
That makes more sense, because if you had it going out to everybody and it's an organized structure there, it wouldn't.
Yeah, it's going to go to Rob and his team, and then they can do their thing.
You said that it automatically locks the doors in a school. Does that mean we have to change all the locks to?
It has that capability. That's the Common Alerting Protocol. So I don't know what system you have in this building, but if it's CAP compliant, which most new technology is, then we can integrate with that. And this year goes to our lock system.
I don't really know what we've got in this building. Do you know, Casey?
No, I'd have to get Joe to. We've got an automatic locking system, but I don't know what kind it is or.
And Commissioner, that's something that's an option. Lexington Schools and the county schools have decided to deploy this already, so they're in the process of doing that. That CAP functionality is not an automatic. It would be something that they would have to put in and configure. Just like, for example, if the county decides to do this with county buildings, we would have to agree to have that done. It's not an automatic, something we would have to agree to.
Okay, thanks for that information. Any other questions? Not yet a question.
Actually, I do have one, Mr. Chairman. Is this app free to law enforcement? Or is that something that we have to purchase or?
Yeah, so the county would purchase it. We worked out some pricing on that. The way that we do that is a cost per employee per year. And so at that point, however many employees you want to put on the system you can. And we're shooting between 600 and 1,000 employees here in the county.
Okay.
What is the average cost of per employee?
Seventeen fifty per year, per employee.
Per employee?
Then I have them break down that, Commissioner, if you'd like me to give you that.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Off right when I have that.
Yeah. How many other government bodies in this state are utilizing this system?
We've got Onslow County, Henderson County, Hendersonville. There's some others, but those are the ones that come to mind. Virginia Beach, it was in their schools. They just rolled it out to all of their employees. DC did the same thing. So we've got a good footprint with this, with Samuel.
You have questions? Appreciate.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you for your presentation.
And we're not finished, Commissioner.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, well, it's two pieces. It's one thing to get the notification and the law enforcement and everything, but as the nerve center at 911, it all comes together because Rob's staff in Davidson County 911, not only do they see the alert, but they see all their other resources in the county or have the ability to see the resources in the county through Command Central Aware. So it's one thing to get the detection. It's another thing to analyze, communicate, and respond.
Organize.
Exactly, Commissioner. An organized approach and to see what your resources are. And that's where seconds matter on the response side. As you know, Commissioner Shores, so for a 911 to be able to see where all their resources are at, SROs, EMS, fire trucks, they can use Command Central Aware and RAVE integrates directly into that as well as whatever cameras may be around the area, that's integrated. We integrate school system cameras all the time. Do we integrate all the school system cameras? No. Mostly in a real-time operations center. We just want to, not we, the law enforcement, the operations center just wants to see what's heavily populated. Where's all the traffic? Where's the classrooms? Et cetera. So as we move into this, this gives you a better idea of the things that plug into Command Central Aware. And obviously, that RAVE product is front and foremost in this situation. But you can bring other things as far as fixed video. It would allow, if the sheriff wanted it, you could live-stream their body worn cameras in a matter of a traffic song. That's up to, that's up to that deck. But those things can come into Command Central Aware as well, as well as the new CAD system and that data that comes into CAD system. So what we want to do real quick is.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
You talked about price, seventeen fifty per employee. Does that include any of these options that we want? Or does it build up in cost for the options that we choose?
I was going to say, Command Central Aware would be outside that seventeen fifty.
And this is a plug-in to Aware, the panic button piece.
About what is the average cost of those modules that you add? Is that another seventeen fifty?
Sure, just the starter package.
Yeah, to kind of level set of what the proposal and offer is here, Alan's going to show you the full functionality of where Aware could give you. The proposal in front of you, I believe Rob and I will speak for you, is to provide the starter package, if you will, a flavor of Aware connected to the RAVE application. That way, how is the county going to be able to use it? See it in action, put hands on it, use it for the functionality of interacting with the school systems, and then start to determine how can we expand this functionality to support sheriff's office, the PDs, other public safety folks there. For this particular Aware starter package, again, you've got your year-one cost. That's your subscription for the first year, plus our services to get it up and running for you, and the team to come in and put it in place. That first year is, we're proposing is $25,000. And then it'll be $12,000 per year as a subscription for this first flavor. To answer your question directly about average on connections and other options, honestly, there's not a direct, kind of straight across, average fee there because it's all dependent on what we're connecting to and how we're connecting. For example, if it were a camera system at the school, it would be dependent on what is that camera system? What video management system are they using? And then how do we connect those together? And so costs are going to vary based off of those types of factors there, Commissioner.
Okay. Let me jump in here real quick. Where the costs are concerned, Derek was talking about the cost for the Command Central Aware. What we kind of figured out for the RAVE pieces, so there are two pieces to the total cost. We looked at 1,000 county employees and then we took, we subtracted EMS, sheriff's office, and 911 because we have readily access to the system itself. So we looked at about 600 and 700 employees. The RAVE piece, if we, so the schools are covered for free under the state RFP. If we decided to do this for like a, for a face in county departments like for the health department, the tax department, or the departments that have for face in, customer-facing situations, then you're, 700 employees, you could do 500 employees. If you did 500 employees, the first-year cost would be $9,600 for the first-year cost. And then the second-year cost would drop to eighty-seven fifty. That's for 500. 700 employees, if you get 700 or seventeen dollars and fifty cents a piece, that would be thirteen-four for the first year. And then you would drop to twelve-two for the RAVE piece. Again, the idea was to leverage what the state already done by putting these into the schools with the Aware being at the comm center. We would have RAVE at the comm center with the schools and be able to leverage that and offer some protection for the county employees with the small cost for RAVE, the additional cost for RAVE, and then also having the separate cost for the Command Central Aware. So you've got two costs here, two pieces of the same whole.
So the Command Central is not the CAD or the Spillman software, correct?
What we did was, we priced two things in that price. You get the analytics that come out of FlexCAD. And we priced the RAVE into the Command Central Aware. You have two of the, two of these analytic packages into Command Central Aware initially to get us started. Now, we did talk about two of the three school systems. Thomasville decided to go with Raptor. And Derek can talk about Raptor a little bit here, or the pricing for the Raptor if he wants to. So we're going to be covering two of the schools because of state mandate. And we're not paying.
Is that correct?
We're not paying for that. The only thing we would pay for, Commissioner, would be the seventeen dollars and twenty cents a head for however many employees you want to cover.
For this?
For that.
Okay.
Now, at one point in time, they talked about putting panic alarms under the desk. That's cumbersome and old technology. This was the way in my mind for ninety-six hundred dollars to cover 500 employees. You know, we've had situations where, either the transportation department or at the bus stop or at the health department's places where we've had problems, where they have the ability to hit that button and engage that panic alarm, where we could get to them faster. So leveraging what the state already did through RAVE with the Command Central Aware, also picking up the analytics we're getting out of Flex now, it seemed like a good way for us to start moving.
So I'm just trying to understand everything. So the school systems are free because of the state contract. But we have to have Command Central Aware to be able to see what goes on at that point. Is that what I'm hearing?
No, sir. So the, I'm going to go back to the very first part of my presentation with the swivel chair effect. So the schools get the RAVE application. The PSAP will have a view into that RAVE application for the school systems.
Okay.
No cost.
Okay.
The cost for the RAVE piece that we're proposing to you is to put that same functionality in the hands of Davidson County employees in your buildings and facilities.
Okay.
So to the schools. The Command Central Aware piece, where that comes in to be beneficial is again, the swivel chair. So if we have the RAVE application here on this screen that I'm looking at as a telecommunications, then I have Thomasville, potentially, if I'm hearing correctly, I have Raptor. So now I'm looking at RAVE, I'm looking at Raptor, I'm looking at CAD and Flex with CAD. The Command Central Aware becomes a single pane dispatch view, if you will, where I can ingest that RAVE application into this view. I can ingest the Raptor into this view. And then I can tie it to my CAD as well. So now from the functionality of a view, I can see all of these in one screen versus multiple. And then when it comes to reconciling that data for response and reports and statistics, I can go to one place to pull all that as well. So that's the benefit of Aware today with this proposal. Then as the county sees that as a benefit, we can start building from there over time and evolving that application to start ingesting other things, whether it's building alarms and codes, whether it's the cameras that Alan was mentioning before, whether it's body worn, LMR, radio. All of those tools can start ingesting into that single view over time. But today's proposal is to try to consolidate this view of these RAVE, Raptor, CAD, and put it together in one place for the county.
Derek, one other question.
Yes, sir.
This looks very similar to the, or it, I guess is, the same CAD that I looked at yesterday while I was working. So in my patrol car, if we go with this system, now what you're telling me is I can also see some of the same things that Rob and them can see as a respondent. Yes.
Commissioner, yes, you came from a command and control standpoint. So Derek described some resources. We put those resources on the map based on the integration. You can click on one of those cameras and see the actual camera view at a workstation, not in a mobile environment. But yes, the mapping portion, you can see in the mobile environment. To Derek's point, you click on that yellow triangle, and we're actually going to show you a RAVE activation here in the room. But you click on that yellow triangle, that's the CAD call from Spillman and all the details about that CAD call.
So as a patrol sergeant and a command, incident commander, first, probably going to be the first one on the scene, I can also see what else is going on? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. You'll be able to see what else is going on based on the integration. You can see all the SO units. Man, where are they coming from? Just like here in this particular scenario. If I zoom out a little bit, obviously, this is an armed robbery that's going on. But as I zoom out, when that armed robbery call comes in, now I see where my units are at. And you can imagine if this was an active shooter at a school or the Atlanta shooting, unfortunately, that occurred yesterday. Same type of situation. I see where my resource is at. They see it at the 911 level. Sheriff Simmons can see this. And if he wants, man, his command staff to have login, his deputy to have logins, they could have this, this same map function and same visual of the resources. So we don't have a blue-on-blue shooting or.
So is this, is there an ABL piece of this as well?
No, the ABL piece comes from the radios everybody wears. That's an investment that Davidson County's already made.
Sure, absolutely.
On the Viper system. You can go ahead and have that location. We don't call it automatic vehicle locator anymore because, I mean, let's think about it. Now we have morphed into a situation where that law enforcement, paramedic firefighter, it's one thing they got on their head, is a radio and it goes with them.
Okay.
Derek, you want to say something?
Yeah, in addition to that, I have a question directly as well. The AVLs that you have on your MCTs, that's ingesting into CAD, that would also ingest in this map as well. So you'd actually have two options. You could go look at your CAD map and see those AVLs, or again, you can have the single view as an incident commander to see as well. view as an incident commander to see as well.
So like Unit 375, that's a car, that's a patrol car logo. When they step out of the car, you'll then see the walkie-talkie logo, or icon rather, and actually see it moving even though they may leave the car behind.
Gotcha.
I've got a question.
Go ahead.
City of Thomasville, would they have access to this even though...
So, and somebody, I guess, can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's very convoluted right now. My understanding is we have purchased the CAD piece.
But unless you purchased it, you wouldn't have.
So, correct. We purchased the CAD piece, so I can see this. So what he's saying is, is with that, and I know there's probably other pieces to this, but I think we're still talking about the Spillman, which is the report writing piece of it, RMS piece of it, but yes, I can see this. We went live Tuesday...
Okay, if Thomasville purchased it, but if they didn't, you wouldn't.
Now, I don't know how that works as far as Rave and all that goes, but we have the CAD system, Mr. Yates, so this was turned on for us Tuesday, I guess it was turned on for everybody Tuesday, correct?
Go ahead, explain that.
Sure. So today, Thomasville is a part of the CAD deployment, so permissions-based, what, depending on the operations, permissions-based, they can today see a map with the AVO units that's coming from CAD today.
So the permission comes out of our 911 center? Is that where the permissions? Okay.
Yes, sir.
That's probably a better question. I didn't know how to ask it. So Town of Denton, any of them can get it as long as you give permission?
Yes, sir, and that's, that's the CAD, the Flex CAD that the county invested in. For the Command Central Aware piece, same concept, it's named user-based, login-based. So if the county, the cities wanted to expand that view out to other first responders, we would just increase the named users, turn the permissions on based on what they need and don't need to see, and we can extend that out, yes, sir.
I see what Commissioner Yates is saying. That is something that each individual, like, I guess, the sheriff's, well, sheriff's officers of county, so Lexington PD would have to purchase the Command Central, or Command...
Well, they can build, sorry, let me know. They can build from what you're investing in.
Okay.
By contributing their part of the named users.
I got you, okay.
Instead of reinventing, we'll have a whole different instance of Aware.
But they have to pay, is that right? They have to pay, that's the problem.
Yes, it's based off of named users, so there would be costs associated with that, yes.
What is the sustainability of this system in an emergency situation such as a tornado or something like that? Does this whole system go down?
Absolutely, great question. Connectivity, so the Command Central Aware piece is cloud-based, so it's web-based. So as long as you have network connectivity, you have internet, you have that functionality there. The good thing about the system that you bought with CAD and records, it's an on-premise solution within work offline mode, if you will. So if you do lose connectivity, the officers can still do the reports, we can still work. Once I have connectivity back, it pushes and updates all of that information in real time back to your server. So you have redundancy there with the two segregated systems, one being in the cloud and one being on-premise there, so that it can still operate.
We have an alternate or an emergency 911 system that's separate from the 911 system we have here. Would it automatically switch to the emergency 911 center?
We have redundancy in the servers set up for CAD system, so there's redundancy set up in that duty IT department. So we have a hot redundant server, so whether we go to the backup center at Thomasville, or if Lexington's light is down, we can walk into Thomasville, log into CAD, as long as the server, the server or the redundant server, we can still operate.
Yeah, if we have, and we haven't had one of these in at least 24 years that I'm aware of, but if we would have to go to Forsyth County, or Rowan County, or we would lose both the 911 centers here, and we had to go, is there a way we could connect to those? Or is that extra?
So I can't speak to this software and speak to the system itself. The way the Ethernet was set up was, we went on to the state backbone for the delivery of 911 rides. As long as we are going to a PSAP, a 911 center that has the same equipment that we are on the same switch, but there are several around us, we could leave Davidson County, go to that center, sit down and buy our login credentials, start taking Davidson County calls.
Yes, that would be important.
And this will include the same thing with Command Central Aware. If Rob's at a conference, if Sheriff Simmons is at a conference, Command Central Aware, anywhere as long as you got connectivity, you log into it and can see everything that's going on.
Okay. The working parts of this, is there a maintenance to this system, and do y'all provide that with the amount that you quoted?
Yes, sir. So in the proposal that you have in front of you for this offer, there's a subscription fee for this particular solution here.
Does that, is included in the price that you quoted?
Yes, sir, it is.
Question?
We provided a, I'm sorry, we provided a year one to get it set up, included with your first-year subscription, and then we showed up to five-year subscription from there. If you want to see more, we can do that, but it's a fixed fee across those years. We don't have an incremental increase for this particular application.
And your response time for a repair is what, 24 hours?
So all of that can be built into your scope of work. You'll see all of that before you contract with us. We'll lay all of that out for you as well.
Derek, they don't have the proposals.
Okay, I'm sorry, that was a misassumption on my part.
My error.
Okay. When you started talking about that, I'm thinking through and I'm thinking...
Bad wrong, bad wrong.
I was trained for a go-live this week.
Okay, any other questions?
I do have one. So this is an app that people would have to put on their personal telephone, correct?
Yes, the Rave app as well. You can put Command Central Aware on a tablet or an app on a smartphone, yes, sir. And it doesn't cost anything to put it on the app.
I got you, all right, thank you.
Mr. Yorn? I'm trying to thank Mr. Sherman to make sure, I guess, one other question, and Rob, whoever, Rob, the, I'm sure it's been built into the thing, but the, I guess, the support piece, we've got plenty of support and...
From them?
Yes.
We've gotten plenty of support from them, and we would get support from them for this as well, I guess.
Is that an extra? Would that be, okay, okay.
That's built into the subscription, that Derek...
That we already have, okay.
That's built into the subscription fee.
Steve? Are you actually paying the seventeen dollars for the individual apps that you would put on your phone? Is that what you're, in effect, doing?
Oh, I'm sorry, the individual app.
You said five hun, like you said five hundred, if you got five hundred employees with phones and they add that app, is it seventeen dollars a fee?
What it is, there's an application that comes with Rave. We actually build the five hundred employees into the application, into the management piece of the application, and then that person would have a login. Is there a login for you on that, on that app, on the actual app on the phone? Is there a login?
You'd be entered into Rave facility, so yeah, you'd be verified that way.
And we do that with some of the other applications we have, where we manage the individual users. That's why when, and I apologize, I was getting ready for the go-live and didn't get you the proposal on that, but we priced the five hundred employees at seventeen and fifty a piece, or a thousand employees at seventeen and fifty a piece, but that would be, we would manage that. We'd manage, whether there were thirty-five people, would be asked us if you wanted to have cover, or fifty people here at this building that you wanted to have cover. We'd know them by name, and we would manage that.
So it's, the app is asking me for a phone number, so I'm assuming you would enter my phone number into your login piece, and then...
And then you'd be recognized.
Once I put my phone number in here and hit submit, it would say, yes, you're authorized, and then the app would come up.
Hundred percent, yes, sir.
Okay, and that eats up one of those spaces that we bought five hundred?
That's right.
Any other question? I would like to see, not only what base that we're getting, but I would like to see a breakout of all of the things that we could do and the prices that we would have to pay for.
That would be in the proposal.
Because I heard, I heard twenty-five thousand a while ago. If we only do two hundred for the same price, twenty-five thousand?
It's twenty-five thousand for the first year of the Command Central Aware piece, and ninety-six hundred dollars for five hundred employees for the first year of the Rave piece.
Okay, so after the twenty-five thousand, there's no cost the next year?
There's ninety-six hundred.
Other than the seventeen...
Or the Command Central Aware piece of it?
It's just twenty-five thousand up front, I guess.
Twenty-five thousand up front includes your first-year subscription and the setup services, and then it's twelve thousand four hundred per year, plus the seventeen fifty.
That's correct, yes, sir.
And as Commissioner, as Chairman McClure pointed out, that is inclusive of the maintenance package?
Yes, sir, yes.
No additional charges?
No, sir, no. It's a subscription model, so it's all inclusive of us supporting that, that functionality.
We've got a lot of numbers, but we'll give you direction. I'd like to find out more information about it anyway, and take a look and bring it down to what, what it's going to cost this county initially, and then what it's going to cost us per year. Because I got two, two things. One is a seventeen fifty, and another one is another charge. So I'd like to know that.
I've got the one proposal already, Commissioner, that I'll get you. The other one, I have Corey to get you, the secondary proposal for the Rave, so I'll have both of those to you very soon.
Okay, that'll be fine.
And you guys are going to do a...
Yeah, we, out of respect, I will just jump straight to, so this is somewhere else in the United States, this particular incident that's going down with the armed robbery, but Corey's going to activate an actual active shooter situation on the Rave app. And it shows up there because my rules engine within Command Central Aware tells it, it's an if and then. If I get a Rave activation on an active shooter, I want it to center on the map, and I want to give it an audible alarm. So it centers on the map. Of course, I've got my radio on. It shows that, man, you could potentially have a law enforcement officer nearby, and then within the event monitor, we can pull that information up, and like Derek mentioned, this is coming from the CAD. So it's, it's part of this, is what you've already invested in with, with the CAD system that Rob's going live with today, and the other things in radio location, and Command Central Aware brings that all into one single pane of glass. And, and there's all the information it has down to the exact location, when it occurred, the updated time, and whatever layers, and if there's any cameras nearby. Obviously, this is, we're in a demo environment, we're not plugged into your cameras by any shape, form, or fashion, but just wanted to be able to show you the, the alert. One other thing, wanted to show you this, important to fire and law enforcement as well as EMS, is the ability to take floor plans, and not just schools, but you can overlay them on government buildings or anywhere that you see fit, and that's part of Command Central Aware. So now you've enhanced that, that last second notification, not only is it showing up in the building, but is, what classroom is it showing up in? Whether that teacher may have activated that alarm, that county employee may have activated that EMS button through the Rave app, and then you can see exactly what location they're at in the building. So two functions of Command Central Aware that we wanted to show you. Any other questions?
You said that two schools, Lexington and Davidson County have already subscribed to this?
Yeah, they're in the process of deployment.
In the process. So are they getting the base plan, or do they have some extras?
They're getting the base, so all of the staff and faculty have the access to the panic button, and then there's going to be visibility within the PSAP.
If we subscribe to this, and they hit the panic button in Lexington, it's going to show up on our stuff?
Is Lexington, Lexington schools? Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Y'all do a good job. You've been able to answer all the questions, and we appreciate that.
Yeah, we appreciate your time. I realize that we're over our allotment, but we, all of us appreciate your time.
Good information.
How many schools do you have this in so far?
Fourteen thousand.
Fourteen thousand?
Yes.
How many times has it been activated in a school?
Thousands. I mean, I'd have to do some research on that, but it's, it's used on a regular basis, not necessarily for the active assailant. The medical button is the most commonly used, but then you also have the staff assist button for the non-emergencies, and that can be utilized on a daily, weekly basis. So the numbers are high.
If you could get those statistics for me, I'd like it, please.
Absolutely.
Corey, if they push these, Corey, right?
Yes.
If they push the medical button, can they talk to you through that, or...
It's a two-way communication, it's not voice. You can text in free form back and forth.
Okay, okay.
Very good, very good. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Very much. Next is changes in the 911 emergency communications dispatch procedures.
Me again. Tuesday morning, after a very long night, we went live with the new CAD system, RMS and JMS. The process for conversion initially was estimated at about eleven, twelve hours due to our excellent IT department and a very excellent, also Motorola, department. We got it converted over, so the old data was converted into where it needed to be in nine hours and fifteen minutes. The system came up fine, it's been working fine. We have made some procedural changes. We had a lot of discussions with the Fire Chiefs Association, a lot of discussions with the Police Chiefs Association on modernizing the way we dispatch in Davidson County, and I'm just going to run through those dispatch changes for you real quick. Before we get started, we had complete buy-in, and we're getting complete buy-in now from that, with those changes. It is different. The way we're doing things now is completely different than the way we did do things, but the ability to have that buy-in from our stakeholders has been very, very well received in both directions. So let me get into this, because you all have been very patient with us this morning. The dispatch procedure has changed to where calls will be dispatched to the zone car based upon a priority of the call, instead of dispatching all calls within three minutes to the lieutenant. With us doing two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand calls a year, dispatching every call within three minutes was non-sustainable. With us doing two minutes and two and a half minutes of pre-arrival instructions, one of the things we talked about with all the police chiefs and so on, was splitting the nature of calls that we have into different priority levels and dispatching those calls based upon those priority levels. The timers on those calls have been set up within the new Flex system to reflect the priority of a call. So a zero priority call, which is the highest, goes out immediately. A priority one would go out within three minutes, a priority two would go out some minutes later, and so on and so forth. The dispatch of priority three, four, and five calls, so the lower priority calls, the not in-progress calls, will go to an MCT, and then it'll be followed up with my unit number, CCOM one. So they would say, CCOM one, priority three, dear MCT. So instead of tying up the radio with all of the information on the call, we're letting the officer, we're telling them you have a call on your MCT. Priority ones and two calls, we still voice dispatch. Those are in-progress emergency-type calls, we're giving them out like we always have.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Recently, had an issue where somebody down in Denton's mother fell on the driveway, and it was not, it went out as a non-priority call, but she couldn't get up. Now, how do you determine what the priority is? I talked to EMS, and they said, they said it wasn't a high priority. Do you and them both make a decision on that, or...
What happens is, is depending on the call itself, how the call came in, and the question and answering for the telecommunicator to the person that we're talking to on the phone, how those questions are being asked and how they're being answered, that call gets qualified as, whether it's a, an alpha, a bravo, a trellie, or a delta call, the priority of the call. So it's based upon the protocol and the questions and the answers. So if it went out as a non-priority call, that was based upon the answers that we got from doing the Q and A to the person that we were talking to on the phone.
Do you have a standard Q and A for each call?
Yes, sir. Based on an international standard. Yes, sir.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's all right. And I can look into that specific call if you'd like me to. Priority ones and two calls will continue to be voice dispatched as they are now. We have changed the BOLO procedure to where BOLOs are silent dispatched to the messenger and not given out over the air unless it's an emergency situation. So if it's an in-progress or an urgent situation, we'll give that BOLO out over the radio like we normally do. If it's not an emergency BOLO, we'll put it into the system, and every officer that logs into their MCT or logged into their MCT can see that.
Thank you. That was a huge thing when, and it was no disrespect to dispatch, but I, as a supervisor or an officer on the street, and they're giving out one or two BOLOs from two or three days ago, taking up anywhere from one to three minutes on the radio, that's a long time if you're in a shooting or fighting somebody, so...
Agreed, and so we talked about something I wanted to do since I got here four years ago.
I appreciate it, and so does other officers, so thank you.
I appreciate it, and now they actually can go back and look at them. They're on, they're on the messenger, so they can go back and see them again, so. We're also able to stack pending calls to a law officer. So instead of, so if James is out on the street and he's on a call, I can stack a call to him, and stack a second call to him, so that he has the ability, so instead of interacting with dispatch, he can go to his MCT, he can clear the first call he was on, and he can pick up the second call that we have stacked to his unit, and he can place himself in route to that call. So what we've been able to do is, we're promoting, we're promoting and reinforcing a unit's ability to do things for themselves, which has never been done before. We're always going to be there, we're always going to be the last line of defense, or the first line of defense, or the first first responder, or out, whatever vernacular you want to put there, but there's been an emphasis from ourselves at the center and from all the police departments and the fire departments to be able to allow them to use the electronics that they have in their vehicles, to allow them to do more that they've not been allowed to do in the past. A fire department who can put themselves in route from their station can save ten, twenty, thirty, forty seconds on their times, which helps their ISO ratings. So we're trying to enable all that and make sure that all that gets done. I'm not going to, there probably will be bumps along the way. It's new to everybody. I can tell you that Thomasville, Lexington, and the Sheriff's Office have done very well as far as adapting to the new change. Instead of them having to key up the radio and say, give me my incident number, they can get an incident number right now off of their MCT and don't have to ask us anything. You know, we have a system now to where if they... You know, we have a, a system now to where if they run your license plate and it comes back with something on it, we can see on the messenger on our system that they ran your license plate and there was a problem with it. So we're enabling them to do more for themselves, which is something that we've never been able to do before, so. The go-live went well. Motorola's support team has been excellent. We've had, uh, our project manager there all week with his staff, so, you know, I just wanted to make sure we briefed you on that, see if you had any questions about that and I'm happy to.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead. Yes, sir.
When you do a, uh, follow-up call to an officer, electronics or like that, when he clears the first code, are you aware that he's cleared it?
Yes, sir. We see it on our screen.
When he arrives on the scene for a second call, are you aware that he's?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what about other members, say it's a deputy?
Everybody.
What about other members in the sheriff's department?
Yes, sir.
How they notify?
They see it on, on their screen, on their mobile screen.
Okay. As long as somebody knows where that officer is, he needs a help and there's nobody there.
Yep. They basically on their commissioner, on their screen, on their mobile screen, they see every one of their units and what their units are doing. So it's almost like they, they have CAD in their car.
That's good. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And as you say, that'll upgrade the rating of, uh, different departments.
Yeah, the ability, they, they prefer to spend ten-two thousand dollars on these electronics and we're just trying to make sure they can use their electronics a lot as soon.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, can I move item J up to the next item? Donna's here. Um, I want to let her get back to work if I can down at the animal shelter.
Yeah.
So what? Go ahead.
Donna, come on up if you don't mind, please. Yeah, well, I know, I know you're not a big crowd person, but, um, two things for item J, um, sad to say, Donna grooms is, uh, let us know, Jason, now that she plans to retire. Um, I think effective, do we get a rep- reprieve on how long or did you already tell us?
I thought we denied that request.
We can do that real quick.
You know, we talked about the spanner thing at the beginning. Um, Donna and I, as I moved down the hallway, I won't say we lost contact, we never lost contact, but Donna and I went through a lot and all y'all were with us, um, as you remember, getting that shelter back up and going. So I don't, I don't know if I can thank her enough. I can't. It's impossible. So I'm not even going to try. Um, I don't know anybody that could have turned that thing around down there quite like that. It not only takes knowing all the ins and outs of the business and everything else, but you gotta, you, you gotta really care about what's going on down there and it takes blood, sweat and tear. Not that every job done, but that one down there, man, it wears on you after a while.
Heartbreak.
Yep. And so, uh, what you've got before you is just making one of these, uh, consultant positions. I'd like to get a shell position if I could to do some type of transition. I figured Donna needs to spread her knowledge of what she knows to whomever we can find and we need to get started pretty quick, so that's what that item's about.
Mr. Manager, does, I mean, Donna, do you have somebody that you think would? And maybe I'm putting you on the spot, but. Do, I guess what I'm saying is, do we have some, someone in-house that could, could handle that?
I think so. Um, but I'm with her every day and, um, I, I do have somebody.
Okay.
With y'all's permission, we can get this thing posted and get started before.
Yeah, that's.
Too much more time goes by.
You need a motion.
I remember it took a, a whole lot of conversation to get you to take it in the, initially. And, uh, we have been really pleased with everything this time.
I've had a lot of support from you guys.
Yeah.
I watched a video real quick. I, I, it's been a long time since I went on the website. We were passing the stats around. I was sending them to a staff member to get on it and I clicked on the Facebook page. And you remember when we, when we had a conversation in here about, in here about padding the side area and getting the side thing with, there was two dogs in the video running, just playing with each other, running up and down the runner. And we never had nothing like that before. Nothing. You know, nothing like that. It was a place where the, the animals came. We tended to them as best we could. If something happened, something happened, but if they got out, they got out now. You got two dogs playing like they didn't want, I'm not saying they didn't want to leave, but they were having a ball going up and down runners. And so it's a place now where we do our best to get you out of there. You know, sickness and things like that are a big deal, but, um, it's a whole different vibe down there now that it has been.
How long are you, how long are you going to be with us, Donna?
Um, maybe till the end of the year, uh, if you, whatever you need.
Uh, Commissioner Yates, Donna and I have talked about that quite a bit and she's been very gracious with, um, providing, you know, service to us until we can get a, a person to take the position.
Twenty-twenty-five, that sounds pretty good.
Well, and Donna will tell you, I did everything to get on my hands and knees and after.
I'm sure, I mean.
I tried.
And there's no way I can thank you for all that you've done.
I appreciate you guys giving us a shot.
Yeah.
There was a meeting in here many, many years ago where we were all crazy.
It was pretty bad.
Those other South Peas were, so it's been a lot of education.
And I will say, uh, in my opinion, Donna has set a very high bar. You know, um, as Casey said, I mean, just the compassion she has for the animals, for her staff, for the dedication to the job, everything. That's, that's a very, it's going to be a high bar to.
Yeah.
To me, uh. Donna and I had a deal years ago, I'll run the business side of it and try to get and come to y'all to get resources. She takes the animals and we don't, we don't, I didn't get in her lane. She didn't get mine. Because there ain't no point. She knows what she's doing with these animals. So, um, to go in there when it was before and see all them cats stacked on top of each other sniffing and sneezing. You know, layman like me walks back there and sees it and says, oh, we got, we got a bunch of cats we'll be able to adopt this month. They're all sick.
And, and to step in off the street like.
To step in off the street and come in with immediate things like, we got to get this back area cleaned up. We've got to have a rotation for these sick animals. The adoption ones go this way, this go that way, dealing with the rescues, getting all that organized in the community. Um, coming to me with, hey, I want to build a pad. You think the commissioners will put a pad back here? Let's get some cages. I can get them donated. It just went on and on and on till it just grew to a place where it's just completely different.
Yeah, we had situations where we had some folks in there for a while that had some drugs that wasn't supposed to be there and they were there and she cleaned all that up.
Right.
We don't have any more cats and dogs on the side of the road. Remember that?
Just an amazing job you done, Donna.
Yeah, and went through the.
I like that. From everyone, every department, anyone here, even libraries, um, led us to adoption events, their place and, uh, oh, cheers for different things. It's been, uh, you know.
You've done a great job.
Absolutely.
Your services to the county has been tremendous, tremendous.
You know, I've always felt like God puts special people in special positions and special places and you came along just.
Just at the right time, right?
I think we ought to throw a party down at the top, Tap House.
Yeah, we can do that. Donna's welcome anytime for that party.
Yep.
But I, I don't have a problem staying till the end of the year if that's needed or, or whatever. You know, we may find a wonderful person quickly. We may find somebody that's wonderful, need more training.
Right. Or somebody spend a little time with you to learn a few things.
Mr. Manager, you're going to do that like you usually do directors? You're going to weed them out and bring like three to us or something like that or?
Yeah, um, this technically, and really a director, but yes, I mean, I think we, we're going to post it like we do everything and do it open. But yes, I'll bring them to y'all and see what you, what you think. Because we don't want just anybody in the role. We've got to be very careful. It took us a long time to get here. I'm not about to make the wrong move, so.
I just wish you the best in your retirement.
I'm going to join you in twenty-four days.
Oh, really?
Look forward to seeing you after.
Very much.
Yes, thank you, Donna. We appreciate you very much.
Always.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, I think we're down to the proclamation for County Clerk Week. Ms. Harris?
And I asked if this could be put on. It was brought forward at our clerks conference a week or so ago. Um, our annual clerks conference, that, that request came forward for the county clerks to be recognized for County Clerk Week. And it is this week, so that's why I put it on for today instead of putting it on for Monday. Putting it on for Monday would have sort of been redundant. So I am asking y'all to approve this today because it is time sensitive.
Okay, motion and a second.
Motion, second.
Cas, you vote. If I can find my clicker. And we certainly appreciate our county clerk.
Thank you very much.
She's more than a county clerk. She's taken care of a whole bunch of other stuff as well. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion on, excuse me, discussion on the Golden Leaf Community Based Grant Projects. Mr. Smith, and he's not here.
He will be back in just one moment. He needed to confer with Donna.
Okay. Let's go ahead with the presentation of updated policies by Human Resources and then we'll come back to him. If y'all will remind me.
Morning. This will be very quick.
Yes, good news.
All this part will be handing it to you. Uh, this is just an update to the environmental health incentive policy. Two things that we changed is we removed the, we removed the food and lodging incentive component and we changed the date that we'll pay out the incentive. Originally, we put the first pay period of the following quarter. We just moved that to the second pay period to allow for easier processing. That's it.
My question to Jason was, are we sure they're tracking these, um, they got something in place now?
Yeah, they, they are tracking that and they understand it's got to be kept moving forward. We get back with her.
We're just asking that this be put on consent for Monday and then it'll be effective Tuesday. Any other questions?
No other questions. Can we put this on May the eighth consent agenda?
I'm good with that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I got you. I got you.
And back to discussion on the Golden Leaf Community Based Grant Project.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Um, I think you all have this one sheet handout here. I tried to summarize this whole grant process in a couple bullet points. Um, you, I mentioned this in March at the retreat, but it's kind of getting closer to time now. Plus there's probably some things we need to do. Um, the community-based grant is an annual process that Golden Leaf goes through. Tim and I went to a meeting over in Lewisville last week. Um, they have eleven million dollars that they share among all the counties. Um, each county can submit up to four projects totaling two million with no single project being more than a million and a half. Um, their priority areas are job creation, economic development, workforce preparedness and agriculture. The key dates at the top are relevant because it's a long process. It actually starts now, soon, um, and in July they start to do, um, uh, site visits and leading all the way up to February. We have received this grant one time before for the Belmont Road Pump Station at the Business Park, uh, which cost about a million and a half dollars. I bring this up because it's getting close to time for us to submit initial projects in July. And I know this is, this can go out into the community. So we're liable to have folks from the schools submit projects or the community college submit projects. Um, there were staff from the community college at this meeting in Lewisville. I probably, it, it's my recommendation, if it's okay with the board, we post this somehow on the county website. I can get Joel to do something because they've got to come to us. The, the projects come to us. We are the, um, not the middlemen, but the end all say all is what we're going to submit to Golden Leaf. So we could receive ten applications or projects or we could receive none. If you're asking what county projects, you're probably thinking that question. You know, we've got two big sewer, um, I'll call them proposals on the table. Uh, one for going to, uh, SRU, one going to Thomasville. Those are going to require some pump station upgrades. Those would be great things to submit for our project. Um, and it could end up being our project again like it was last time, eats up the entire process. That'll be something we'll have to bring before this board and decide this summer. But I'm just asking for permission to post something out so I can sequester the projects as they come. And I want you to keep in mind how this works and the key dates. Uh, because sometime this summer we, we'll have to make, and the decision by July tenth, you can see I have to submit my initial project or projects.
Does this go out to the private sector as well?
Um, Craig, do you know? I don't think it does, does it?
Because it says job creation and economic development, so that would.
It's got to be, it, it has to be for the.
Local governments and nonprofits, yeah.
You can do something out of the park. We can do something.
Right, right. I get you. Just wanted to clarify that.
And I don't know who will submit, uh, Vice Chairman. I don't, I don't know. I'm, I'm anticipating the college will, but I don't know that for sure.
Okay. All righty, post it.
Thanks, sir.
Proceed. Uh, discussion on a possible moratorium for waiver of fees for certain items at the landfill. Mr. Smith?
Uh, Charlie, come on up if you can and help me. Um, Commissioner Shale asked me about this. We have done this before in the past, uh, where we had a wave of, for one day of fees for the landfill to bring things. In the past, it got a little unwieldy because it was, I think at that time, Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong, it was for bulk items then too. It's just, it got to be, the word got out, however ever it was advertised, that bring even your regular trash down and we had a mob of people there. So, um, Commissioner Shale asked me to get Charlie up here this morning to talk through this. If we wanted to do it again, I just, according to Charlie, sometime this summer's a good time or the winter or both. Um, and it's okay if it's more bulk items. It's easier to manage, in other words, instead of having it just be a free-for-all. But I brought Charlie up here. We can talk through this now, however we want to do it.
Charlie?
Yes, yes, good morning. I actually spoke with, uh, Commissioner Yates this morning for a while on this and stuff. Um, yeah, the last time we did it and stuff, it ended up being kind of chaos. We didn't really have enough staff. And usually in the spring and in the fall, you, you're busy anyway with people doing things. So if we could have it like the, the third week, the whole week of July and we need to advertise what they can put in and what they can't because last time people were trying to bring us brush and items and stuff that we legally can't take anyway. So we'd like, you know, time and stuff to be able to kind of advertise this. And then we'll have to make sure that we have our staff probably work six days that week. Uh, we've been struggling with help like, like EMS and, um, trying to find operators and talk to Mr. Yates about this this morning is, is a really hard thing to do. We're two people down right now and stuff and when you only have like five positions and stuff, two people's a lot to be missing. But, um, we'd be looking at like bulky ways from residential stuff. We don't want to do commercial stuff. We, we have people that, um, clean out mobile homes and apartments for living and stuff and that's not what we would want to waive. We'd want to waive for residents and stuff where somebody's dumped trash on their property. A way that they can get rid of it and it doesn't cost them as much other than the labor loading it up.
And you think the third week in July for the whole week would be good?
Yeah, I think, I think it, everything kind of slows down a little bit and stuff and that would allow our staff, staff probably to handle it.
And you, um, you could get a list of what we don't.
What we could do, yeah, we, we've got signage at our site, but we could probably hand some flyers out and probably put something on our website and stuff to help people.
That would be good.
You know, if, if they know what they can bring and what they can't bring, it's going to help everybody.
Debbie, is that something that we could post in the paper as well?
I could send, I could put a press release together and we could get it out to the, out to the media list.
How, how long would you want to do something like this? We need to discuss a couple, um, issues at, at first and then we'll figure out how we want to advertise it or whatever. But Steve, you may want to bring it up or the chairman, kind of what brought this on for this part. Uh, and whether we going, uh, whether we going, uh, put a ten-load limit or a fifty-ton limit or there's some sort of limit on it because there's actually something that brought this back up again, which needs to be addressed. And I actually got a piece of property where somebody's dumped ten, probably, uh, tandem loads of stuff on my property. It's got to be cleaned up, so I'm going to recuse myself from the vote later because, uh, this, this instance where you win or you have, the, the gentleman called me out there to look at cleaning it up and I gave him a price for the labor part of it. So, uh, I, I want to make sure that's clear up front and I want to recuse myself because if we do something here, I got a piece of property that I want to clean up too as well, so.
Yeah. I think that, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Uh. Beautified Davidson County, remember they called me and they're always having to pick up mattresses and couches and, and, uh, you know, bulk out, those big bulk items that we're talking about. And then of course the property situation up there.
Yeah, but I'm saying like if, if somebody's got ten loads on their property, are we going to cut it at ten loads? Is that going to be the max or somebody may have fifty loads of debris they want to clean up off their property.
What's your feeling on that, Charlie?
Well, you know, I hope that that wouldn't happen. Uh, you know, our tipping fee's still the same since two thousand and seven, so, uh, you know, we, we don't, even if we charge, we're not making, you know, a lot to the fees.
Thirty, what are you ordering? Thirty-five dollars a ton?
It's thirty-six dollars a ton. It was changed in two thousand and seven and, and it was changed then because we had to start paying the state two dollars per ton tax and that's what that, uh, was, was back then.
Charlie, what do you recommend?
Charlie, what do you recommend? How do you recommend we go about this?
It would, it'll be really, really hard for, for people to be able to figure out, we, if we ask them where it was coming from, um, that would probably help, uh, as far as the volume and stuff, um. You know, if, if you help somebody get rid of two or three forty-yard boxes of trash, that's a lot right there.
Less on the side of the road.
Yeah, and, and then on top of that, you, like-
Now, this is on people's property like it's on mine, you know?
Yeah, yeah, what, what's on the side of the road, we already have to keep American beautiful, and we've got that worked out.
You take away that piece of property, it's going on the side of the road, and that, that is, that would just happen to be available, and this guy's side must suffer consequences, along with many more, you know?
Well, I mean, I get it, I got ten loads on my property that I gave nobody permission to dump, so.
Yeah, yeah.
But again, where do you draw the line, is what I'm saying.
You could drop, uh, ten loads, um.
Well, you know, is it a dump truck load, is it a pickup load, a trailer load?
After ten, if they want us to dump, then you charge them.
That's what I'm saying, it can be ten pickups like mine, or it could be ten dump trucks like Todd's, so, you know.
Well, like I say, mine will have to be on dump trucks, because that's how much they put on my property, and I can't-
Would it be better to do weight versus?
I just say ten loads, non-commercial.
Okay.
Is that, can you keep track of it by load like that, Charlie, I mean, I guess because we're coming across the scale, I was about to say, or is it a time thing? Um, I'm asking Mr. Vice Chairman, is time, you just run it for a certain amount of time?
If, if we did it, if we did it for one week, I mean, that's, people only got so much time in, in, in one week.
You, you good with one week?
No, I did it in a day, and it about killed them.
No, they did it for three or four days last time.
No, we did it for a month, yeah.
Extended on past.
Wow.
And we had some people quit over it.
So are you good for a week, though?
I think we could do a week if we did like the end of July.
And you check the property owners as they come through to make sure there's people in this county then?
Yeah, we're only allowed to ask what, what county they're from, so if they tell us they're from Davidson County, but they're from Versailles, we can't ask them anything else.
We can't ask them where the property, they used to ask me all the time where my property's at.
We were, we were asked to stop doing that.
I mean, what do you think they're gonna tell you? I mean, go on, they're gonna tell you it's an address here in the county.
Yeah, yeah.
Unless you're gonna drive out there and watch them loaded up, I mean, I don't know how you-
I think if we did that, uh, we put what you would take then, in bold letters.
Well, if somebody's bringing something in, we can, we can ask them, how mu- how many loads you think you got?
Yeah, and, and, um-
And then we could, we could probably do the ten yards, or ten loads doing that way.
In bold letters, you could tell them what you can't take.
Yeah.
And then that way, they won't be bringing stuff that you can't-
And some things they would have to separate, like, um, um, we take appliances, but appliances can't go in the trash, they're a certain place they have to go.
Right.
Um, uh, car batteries, you know, if they got car ba- we can take car batteries, but they have to be separate and go to a separate place. Same thing with, uh, the old televisions that have the big picture tubes in them, those have to be separated, they have to go to a separate place. I mean, we'll still take it, but by getting advertised this, it'll help people understand how they need to kind of separate and what they can bring, and, you know, if they got a dump truck.
What about paint?
Well, we already have HHW day, the first Saturday of every month.
Yeah, but what I'm, what I'm talking about is, would you want to set the more, that, this date on the date that you're gonna be handling paint?
No, it's, it's, uh, the last, it's the first Saturday of the month, so being the last week of July, it wouldn't interfere.
Okay.
You want it to be the third week or the last week?
It'd be the last week of July.
Okay.
Kind of do it the way to make it easier on your staff, you know, they're not overloading it down there.
Yeah, it's just-
So Charlie, do you, you think we should do it by weight, or should we do it by like, like we said, ten loads?
I think it'd be hard to do it by weight, because some, some trash is really, really fluffy.
So ten loads is?
Uh, we can ask, as they bring some stuff in, and we can say, you know, how many loads you got, and you know, if they say, well, I got five more, well, we can kind of keep track of that, and if somebody says, well, I got fifty loads, we say, well, you know, ten's about all you can bring. Okay. And we can at least try it, see how it works.
That'd go.
And I'm just guessing this guy's got ten, I don't know, I mean, that's kind of, maybe seven or maybe twelve, but I guess if it's twelve, he pays for the other two.
If they can get the dirt out of all that stuff, it'll be less, because he got, the way it's been piled up.
They'll bring us dirt separated, we'll take the dirt for free.
Yeah, it's hard to separate this, and I, and I don't know what, you know, and again, nobody knows what's in this pile till you start breaking it apart.
Yeah, you, you don't know what people's buried in there.
Yeah, you can see some of it, it's just unreal. But is, is everybody, is this going with this?
Do we need a motion, or just?
Let Charlie draft it up, and let us look at it, or what do you want to do?
Going for consent on Monday?
Not a consent, because, I mean, Commissioner Yates would not be able to vote on consent again, but.
Okay, so standalone for Monday, okay.
Yeah, I guess, what, deliberation?
Yeah.
Deliberation?
And while we're talking about that separate thing, going to what you said, I think we need to do away with the, the cost for mattresses at the landfill, and I told Charlie about it.
Yeah, I, I've got stuff in my budget proposed, one of the things I proposed, because, you know, with, with mattresses and stuff, most places will take the first mattress and box spring for free. Or not free, but you know, with your other stuff, not an extra charge, and then after that, you charge, and that way, if a motel's bringing stuff in, it kind of keeps them off of you, because that, that happened to us back when Rex, Rex ran things. A motel brought everything at one time, and mattresses are just terrible in landfills.
If that's something that you want to consider, though, I haven't told Charlie this, we're deliberating the budget now on the Thursday before, I'm giving it to you, I didn't have no fee changes proposed, Charlie, and I'll tell you why, it's some, some of the time. But if you want a mattress change singularly, let's, let's-
I think we need to do it at the same time, and that way, people know that their mattresses, uh, they don't have to pay ten bucks to drop their mattress off.
That's fine.
I'm good with anything after the first set, or maybe two sets, a box spring, some mattresses, then it's ten dollars.
Yeah, we, we could do that.
But drop it, that's what I'm saying, I need a formal, if since it's a fee, is that one to take it, just take it to zero?
Take it to zero and keep them off the side of the road, I mean, I've been here, they go in there to the landfill and find out it's ten bucks to drop a mattress, they turn around, they see the mattress laying up the road about a mile.
It would still be part of the flat fee, I mean, if they brought the mattress in by itself, the minimum flat fee would be eight dollars, but if they bring the, and they usually bring the box, bring a mattress with other stuff, and then that would still just be, you know, the flat fee if it's just a regular pickup load.
Well, but I'm talking about if they just bring a mattress and a box spring out there, I guess, and we're not talking-
Just singularly, one, right.
Zero dollars, you know?
So that's, that's, well, that's where I need specifics, if we want to do that one now, Debbie, put that one on, I mean, it's not really hard to take it from-
Add that to as part of the waiver, or no, just add a standalone item?
Standalone, I would think, you know, I mean, if that's okay with the rest of the board.
For how many mattresses?
I mean, I, I'd say up to a couple or whatever, I mean, if somebody's changing mattresses in their house, yeah, they might change theirs, and one of the kids or something.
Okay, up to, up to two sets.
Two sets?
Yeah.
Up to two sets?
Up to two sets.
We've had more mattresses blow off cars in this county and not everything.
Yeah, I agree.
Do you need a motion, Casey, or just?
No, well, it sounds like we're gonna put it on, so I, now my ears hear what we're doing from eight to zero for two sets.
And would that be, would that begin, begin in July first?
I mean, Todd sits on a solid waste committee, and Charlie's overland, yeah.
That beginning, beginning July first.
As soon as, yeah, after Monday night, right.
Be fine.
Effective immediately once it's passed.
All right, we'll, we just, uh, bang.
I think I got everything I need, I'll have Tim put that on with this other thing, just from eight to zero, two sets.
Okay.
So it's in, so it's in print.
Do you, do you want Tim to do that one?
Yeah, we'll do it.
I, I just, I just have one worry, though, are, are you sure you want to do a whole week?
If somebody's having-
What if you have a horrible day, the first day, just massive?
It's always, it's gonna be, it's gonna be horrible.
Massive.
Wouldn't it not do it next time?
Well, you did it a month last time, though, right, Charlie?
Uh, three or four days, but-
Yeah, and it was, it was really, really bad.
The only thing I could take care of, I'll set that is, if you do it for just one day, then you got everybody to-
Everybody's gonna come there, yeah.
You got, you got some people too and stuff, if they're trying to clean a trash pileup that was on their property.
I think a week is good.
It's gonna take a little while for them to get to do that.
Well, you may have a rainy three, four days, yeah.
I just want to make sure for you and your family.
That's the only downside I see, everybody trying to get in there on that one day, and it'd really be overwhelming to do it.
Well, it could be raining, it could be raining, yeah.
Last week, and you'll get all the stuff together.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be Monday, Monday through Saturday, that way, everybody's got hopefully a day off that week that they could bring stuff.
Chairman, is that it?
Chuck, if he's, uh, if Todd, if we discuss this, then Todd can't participate in the discussion or the vote if we vote separately, but if it's included on the consent agenda, does, does he have to recuse himself of that?
I, I, I think Mr. Shell had a good idea to put this as a separate item on deliberation, and that way, it's cleaner that the item that he is recusing himself from. Um, so I, I agree with the proposal that Commissioner made with regard to that.
All right, for those of you that are anxious to make a motion, we'll take a motion now to adjourn.
Will you?
If I change the motion, I guess we want to keep going.